All right, everyone. Today is Tuesday, January 10th, 2023. Welcome to the Planning Board Meeting. We are meeting here this evening, 7:00 PM. Town Hall, Meeting Room 124. In accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20. Notice was given that the meeting is this evening, as I previously stated. Alternate public access to the meeting has been provided via Zoom, which is an online video conferencing application. This app will allow users to view the meeting and provide comments during allocated windows, to join, follow the web link, or call the dial-in number that is provided on the town's website. The meeting will be recorded for future rebroadcast by the Norfolk Community Television. For further information getting connected and using the video conference features, please visit the town website. And we will begin with introductions. Well, first, I just want to say Happy New Year. This is our first meeting for 2023.
Happy New Year.
And we will do some introductions. We'll go around the table here of who's in attendance this evening. We do have one person that will not be joining us. John Weddleton will not be joining us tonight. But going around the table, we have our associate, Melissa Mayo, Gary Sullivan, Chris Matford, Chad Peck, myself, Eric Diamond, Richard McCarthy, our Town Planner, and Betsy Vajole, our Admin Assistant. And then we do have a few people already joined us via Zoom. So we will look forward to talking to them at the appropriate time. So we have no public hearings. I'm a little scared here, Rich. What's going on? 2023 is starting off crazy. No public hearings and no appointments. So we're going straight into new business.
Yes.
So.
Straight into new business.
First item is the zoning bylaw amendment, signed bylaws.
So in terms of new business.
Yes.
I know that's what's top on the list. However, we do have, we have a couple
Other.
Guests that are.
Okay.
Topically here.
Sure.
That's lower down in the order. If you want to just kind of.
I'm fine with that. So where would you like to start?
So I would propose you start with Southwood Hospital.
Sure. Okay. And that would be Josh Fiola has an update for us?
Josh is really more of a listener.
More of a listener. You're going to provide the update?
Yeah, he might chime in, but there's no presentation per se.
Okay.
And then Jackie Bard from GFI is.
Excellent. Yes, I do see Jacqueline on as well. Excellent. Okay.
So.
And Hannah Marsh is from GFI is also.
Okay.
Marsh is on there.
Excellent. Great. Yeah, we can do the Southwood update first.
Excellent. So what what I provided to the board was a memorandum from MAPC looking at different scenarios in terms of analyzing for potential redevelopment options for the Southwood Hospital site.
Yes.
And I provided a copy of this to GFI to have them take a look at it, give us some feedback on it in consultation with Josh a while last December. And the idea was let's look at some scenarios to analyze and hopefully consensus is these are worthwhile to analyze as opposed to picking scenarios and going through stuff. And it may not be make the most sense to go that way in that approach. So what Josh has laid out is five different scenarios, some potential outcomes, and then also impact analysis to those.
All right.
And so I don't know if the board had maybe had a chance to take a look at it from between a while ago. But the, just for the audience purposes.
Yep.
You know, the five scenarios was development under current property conditions, zoning, and deed restriction. The second one is development under current zoning. And then the third one is possibility of a 40B project. The fourth is development of a 40R district. And then the fifth is a development of new zoning districts. And in some respects, really, those all scenarios could be interchangeable, right? So there might be combinations thereof. But it gives you just a sense of some options to take a look at.
Can I ask a clarifying question on the 40R piece?
Sure.
When I was reading through the 40R information, it stated that a big piece of that was its location proximity to public transportation.
So there is another criterion, which is is it concentrated development? Josh, I'm trying to think the term off the top of my head.
And so I was curious, like, how much does that play into the decision for the 40R with regards to the application if we did choose to go that direction? Because to be quite honest, it doesn't look like a bad decision for that neighborhood or that area. But my concern was with regards to the the public transportation piece because it's not close to public transportation.
Yeah, so the, so twofold. Twofold. One was that the potential Greenway project is a transportation mode, which adds to transportation. It not typical as a buster or.
Nope. Spikes are, you know. Biking community would be great.
Right. We also, again, not, I know it's not overly used, but there is a bus route that goes in that area as well. There's the Gatcher operates Fort Town, I think it is, something like that. Franklin, Rentham, Foxborough in Norfolk in terms of. And then they're also, and so I did some, this is quite a while ago, some preliminary discussions with Bill Ralph and Department of Housing Community Development, who runs the 40R program. And there could be situations where there might need to be infrastructure to be put in place to make the full. So it could be conditional. It's a possibility. So it does, I want to say, if I have my.
Would like a shuttle from that area to the commuter rail suffice as well.
Yeah, and I wanted to say, let me just look real quickly.
Cause isn't there like an old abandoned bus stop not too far to the.
So highly concentrated areas is part of it, Rich. And then it says, so it says in areas of concentrated development such as existing city and town centers and in other highly suitable locations.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this.
Would be highly suitable potentially.
Right.
So we fall under that criteria. And obviously, the, you know, the Greenway project is another enhancement to it.
So I think, I think what you're trying to get at, if I put, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but if I understand what you're saying is, we don't want to, I guess, consider this as a 40R if it's never going to.
Exactly. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I know the the idea of 40 anything in this town has negative connotations. And I want to make sure that we're careful about using certain terminology if it's not something that'll ever come to fruition anyway.
So one option we could consider, and I think if you're, if I could get it potentially, is speak to Bill Rail and maybe he can, I mean, awesome if I got a letter from him or something and say, look, this, this location has that potential just to, you know, document it for the board and the public say, hey, we're not going down the wrong path. Maybe some other examples.
Yeah, I mean, if you go to the government's website, there's a whole list of applications that have been submitted previously to show the towns that have successfully implemented them as well. And so, I mean, that might even be an opportunity for us to just do a little bus tour as well if we wanted to go visit one of those.
The one, so for example, the one east and it's not connected to any commuter rail.
Yeah.
Okay. So there, but I could, for this, for our study here, if you want, I can certainly talk to Josh, we can reach out to Bill, maybe, like I said, something from him to say, listen, you know, I know you got work to do, but it will at least, it can be.
Does it qualify?
Does it qualify?
Does this location.
Qualify for consideration. There's a whole lot of details.
Perfect wording, yeah. Qualify for consideration.
So I can, I can ask him to do that. I think that makes a lot of sense.
I think that's a good suggestion.
So, yeah. I know that, you know, I did get, so Chad offered up a comment in which I think you could, you can, your, one of your comments about the scenarios, I think you just, you could do your own explain, right?
Yeah, so I just responded directly to Rich when he sent us the email. I just responded that, you know, I think that part of these scenarios, so these scenarios are very broad given here. But one of the original, the original proposal or recommendation from GFI was to do a high-tech smart warehouse. And that immediately went nowhere because they were like, oh, no, they're never going to like it. And I understand that the, the neighborhood over there was very vocal about, about, no, we do not want that. But when we did the survey, when Josh did that, that big survey, it wasn't like a glaring no, it was kind of in the, if I recall correctly, somewhere in the middle of the pack. And so it would be interesting just to see that scenario and how it pans out. Not saying we're going to move forward with that. I'm not saying I support it. I'm not saying I don't support it. It just would be very interesting to see how this scenario pans out because a warehouse would provide a lot of tax revenue for the town and take very little from the town as far as resources. And I believe the original concept was like a 600,000 square foot high-tech warehouse and also some housing over there. I think it was some apartments or condos or something. It was both. But it would be very interesting to see if that's a feasible study because we as a town don't have these big tax offsets, like Rentham has the Alamo Mall, Plainville's got the casino. What does Norfolk have?
The prison.
True. But I just, and again, I'm not saying that that, I'm not saying that I support this. I'm just saying it would be very interesting to, to run that scenario and see if it's, I realize the local, the nearby community there is, is not in favor, right? But, but that doesn't, they don't speak for the whole, the whole town. Because it seemed like it was middle of the pack. Just my two cents.
No, I think it's, I think it would be helpful because you can, could further say, okay, this is why we don't want, you know, I mean, there's some analysis points or there might be, well, I think with some of these scenarios, there, I think the thought that it's development without addressing impacts to the community is not how this is going to happen realistically, right? So there has to be, it's not like trying to shove something in and now not address the concerns from there. Because any successful development, you're going to have to address impacts that have been raised by the community.
Right. And with the 40R, you get additional funding for things like education as well.
Right.
Straight out of the gate.
Right. So I suspect in some people's mind, it would think like, you're going to stick the warehouse there and all this traffic and we're going to just live with what we have, right? I mean, the bad conditions that are there would only be exacerbated. Potential, I'm just, I'm speculating a little bit, right?
But you, let's be honest, no matter what we build there, the traffic is going to be impacted and there's going to have to be some modifications.
Yes.
More than likely.
I agree. But I don't think the, you know, the thought that there would be consideration how traffic will be modified was really on the table. You know what I mean? Back then, you know, so it was like, like, anyway, you probably would react to like, whoa, you know.
Well, at the end of the day, what we've always said is we want this to be a partnership with GFI. We want what's best for the town. They obviously have to make a profit. You know, it's going to clean up the property and I don't want to rehash everything we've already talked about, but it's, it's an opportunity to clean up the property, provide services for the town that maybe we don't have or we need to expand upon. And, and they need to make a profit doing it at the end of the day. But so it's, we want to make it a win-win for, for not only they, they need to, you know, to me, it's a huge, huge kudos if we can get this property cleaned up.
Yes.
And, and provide value to the town. Benefit to the town, I guess.
Correct.
Better way to put it.
Josh, did you want to offer any thoughts on that?
Fine. So I think that what we're setting up really with the scenarios is a tool that the, so we can, I think once we get these various models running, like the fiscal impact analysis and the financial feasibility analysis is the two foremost tools which we're developing. Adding in a scenario like Chad's describing to explore a warehouse or some combination of development program like that, I don't think will be that much of a heavy lift. Once we've got the models set up, we can just kind of plug in variations and I think it will crank out some answers for us. The, with that said, I'll just state a few caveats, which I'll state along the way here frequently as we, you know, present this work, is that we're, we're viewing this more as a planning level comparative analysis. So we aren't going to give the town, of course, or the developer definitive answers about what may or may not be feasible, but we're likely to come to conclusions that this type of development program may be more likely to result in remediation of property than this program. But we won't, we won't be saying, you know, this is exactly where you should be heading. So, but, but I think we will be able to, across the memo that we've outlined, draw conclusions that will help guide the process. And in addition to the pathways for the scenarios, which you all just talked about, there are more detailed development program outcomes and variations within those various pathways. The reason why we took a step back just at a higher level than just exploring the development scenarios and those outcomes specifically is because there, there are some nuances and differences in those different approaches, as you were all just discussing, between 40R or not 40R, for example. Or I think it's also useful, we plan to use these scenarios and those various pathways to illustrate that the, the property under its current circumstances is at a relative dead end for, you know, a number of reasons. And we all know those reasons, but it's good to include those reasons in this analysis so that we, we remember and recognize them. So that's, I think, just to add a little more context and color to the conversation, that's what we're thinking. And we thought it would be much more useful to share all of this with you all and with the other stakeholders involved in the process prior to spending all of our time and hours doing this work to just think about it and reflect on it as a memo projecting the work. And then once we all feel comfortable, we will dig into it and, you know, bring forward those results when they're completed.
I think that's great. I'm looking forward to seeing what comes out of that. The fiscal analysis review, I think, will be a great tool to, to look into this as well. But yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking forward. I'm, I'm, so far, the, I guess, the proposal that GFI showed us, shared with us recently, the mixed use, I don't know how recent it was, been a while, but, I mean, that was an interesting concept as well. So looking forward to seeing what we can, what they and we can come together with. Like I said, it's a partnership.
Do you, I don't know if this will need a vote per se, but I mean, is there, well, actually, is there any other questions about what was outlined in this, want to discuss?
Would be relative to hear GFI's input on any of this since it's their.
So they had.
They're most into this.
Sure. So I did send this actual memorandum, so we did meet with them over via Zoom back in December when this was drafted and they, we talked first and then we sent it to them. And then there is an email. But Jackie's, if you want to hear directly from her, but she, they were comfortable. What was outlined is looking at different development scenarios for the analysis point. But I know, put her on the spot, but she's there.
No. Hi there. I'm so sorry that I've been on mute and I want to thank you all for pushing us up in the agenda here, to be honest with you. We, we thought we were way at the end of your agenda tonight. So Bill Buckley was planning on joining as well, but he hasn't been able to hop on yet. No, I'll just add that we are looking forward to, you know, seeing the completed analysis, which will include the fiscal impacts of each scenario. As you said, this is a partnership and we're really open to continuing these conversations. Other than that, I don't really have much to add right now. Just looking forward to seeing more, more of an in-depth analysis of each scenario. And I want to thank Josh for his work on this.
Thank you, Jackie.
Does that feel comfortable? So then the next step would be to get, get working on these scenarios and impacts. And then, once that's done, there will be a community meeting to discuss all this with the community at large, which will, we will probably do some kind of hybrid meeting too, I suspect. So people are comfortable, you know? Because we did talk, if you remember, it was quite a while ago. I think, I don't want to mix my topics up, but I think we're thought having the meeting in here in hybrid, so people want to come. Because it did come last time in person, some people did. We would do a hybrid as opposed to going to the school or a larger venue. And it worked pretty well. I mean, it's, if you go to a larger venue, you don't have a lot of people, it's kind of, doesn't work. Now, you could do it and then there's, you know, it works great. So, but the idea would be to do, host a hybrid meeting. We would need to get out the word, publicize it, you know, spread the word with the community and so forth. And then once, once we have an idea from Josh where they are, we want to kind of plug it in, figure out where to plug it in because we're going to be kicking off master plan work too. So there's going to be a lot of interrelated, interconnected things that are going to be happening over this next year as it relates to planning. So the good thing is they're also doing our master plan, so they are.
Intimately aware.
Intimately aware, so we need to be clear to the public as much as we can. So like, what's this again? You know, so, so that, that's always in the front of my mind, thinking forward because there will be quite a few different things going on, so.
Yeah.
All right. So now I would say we can.
I've got another question.
Oh, sure.
I guess I believe the contamination and remediation work is still under investigation.
It is.
Right?
Yes.
Would any of that potentially have outcomes to these different development opportunities that we're looking at? And are we early in doing all this analysis if remediation dictates you can't do or can do certain things?
So there might, they are doing their further analysis and assessment going on. There could be a point, so we kind of look at the scale of this, you know, residential is the high bar, right? That's the ultimate bar in terms of cleanup costs. So they, it's quite possible there could be a situation where they come back and say that, you know, there's, it's not feasible economically to do this to clean up to the, to a residential level.
Or maybe part of it can't be cleaned up.
Or part of it. So, but at the same time, they kind of need to get an idea of what they may be able to develop here and.
Giving them a menu and then telling us what their allergies are. And then that limits the menu to what they're allowed to order.
I like that.
That's pretty good.
I'm here all week.
Yeah, well, well stated. Yeah, so I don't think it's too soon. I don't.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, we're not putting shovels in the ground at this point. We're just doing theoretical analysis on what the options are available to us and what those might end up costing.
And that's.
Well, it's a unique situation, I mean, because of the cleanup. If it was just a 80 acres of land wooded property, it's very different, very different putting together the feasible economics for development. But it's 80 acres of, you know, not all contaminated, some, and different contaminations in different areas. And so it just makes it.
I could easily see as we're going down this pathway where there could be a point where, listen, we, we think we could do something, but in order to create that partnership that we, we need to kind of figure a way to kind of attack it differently. So for example, maybe we need to reach out to the state level to see what kind of additional incentives they could provide to the site for redevelopment and cleanup. We haven't even had those discussions, but that might be more critical than not, like, you know? So there's, I know it's going to be a path that's, you know, it's not a straight path.
It's going to require flexibility on our part as a town as well. To, you know, understand that there's limitations in place and with each pocket of magical, magical radiation that we end up finding on that location, like, it limits what we can do.
Right.
And so if we get to a point where everything is thrown out the window and all we have in front of us is a warehouse, then we have to really soul-search and identify if that's something that we want.
Right.
Josh, do you need a window, a high end and a low end remediation cost to be able to do the analysis? Or do you have that number?
Yeah, so it is, I think we're using 10.
We have included in a remediation assumption, in this case, we proposed carrying $10 million for full remediation of the property. I think we also had, maybe it doesn't show up in this memo, but we have a refined assumption where a partial remediation, meaning capped landfill, I think we were going to account for that being less than $10 million. I think maybe the assumption was around $7 million, something like that. But, but I think the exact numbers are a little bit, you know, can be adjusted. I think we're, our intention here with these spreadsheets is to use, make, create them in as open a book a way as possible. And if we want to, if someone says like, well, what if it was $15 million in remediation costs, then we could plug that number in and do what is called a sensitivity analysis on those variables to see how much it makes a difference. And we can do that in any number of ways. And if you think the assumptions for revenue on residential units that we've used is too high, we could lower it, for example. Or if the development, if the construction costs that we've, we've included are the wrong ones, you know, we are happy to adjust that. So we will, I think as we prepare this work and present it, we will present all the assumptions that are used. And if anyone has thoughts about how they could be improved, we're all ears. And then we will think of this more as a kind of a working tool that hopefully will be useful as more information is gained and further scenarios are identified.
And do you work with GFI and us on those values ahead of time before your analysis? Or is that a round two type of analysis?
Some of them, we are, like, we did discuss that $10 million plug number already. And so that's, you know. And so, that's, you know, as good a number as anything right now. And the other numbers, we're happy, I think what we're in the process of doing right now is gathering some of those data points. Some of them are from sources like CoStar, which is a real estate, sort of agglomerator of data that can be very geographically specific. So, I, I think maybe it might be too soon to share a list, but we, we're happy to share it once we get that list populated of the assumptions we think are good ones. We're happy to share that with all parties and have people tell us if, if they agree.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Oh, so it sounded like you were leaning towards asking for a vote or something.
Yeah. Because I don't, I think there's a good sense of where everybody is on this.
Okay.
Unless you want to vote, you can. But I don't think we
I don't know what
I don't think we need to vote at this point. I mean, I, yeah, I read the memo. It looks good. I like, like what I see. I like the factors. You know, it's, it's basically a lot of it from, comes from the survey that we did. You know, remediation was our number one. School age kids was number two. Traffic concerns, number three, and so on.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
Okay. So, we'll, so a couple of things. One would be the first is, is to, I'll reach out to Bill with Josh in terms of the 40R.
Yep.
And then, and then, once your data points are, I'll pass them through and
Okay.
Share them with the board and get your feedback on it. So, like I said, I think, you know, we will have a, like I said, we'll have a public meeting. And then, it's kind of, you know, this is more, I think I mentioned this the last meeting. But so, if I didn't, I know, and Josh may need to chime in, not necessarily need to chime in. But Executive Office Environmental Affairs has granted, I think it was Stoughton, if I recall, that Josh had mentioned that, you know, it, it is, this is kind of what's somewhat in our timeline. So, if you recall, we already have the money. And because of the nature of the subject, because we're doing some planning on contaminating site, I know executive, EOEAs understands that, you know, these don't go at lightning pace. So, you know, it's, it's somewhat our schedule, actually. That's, that's the point. So, just want to let you know, there's not a clock ticking that necessarily, it's our own clock. So, we are making the schedule.
Yeah. I mean, we still have the, the restriction on the land use as well in place.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. But I'm just saying, in terms of the study work, you know, there's not like states saying, hey, you gotta finish this up.
Kind of a thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry.
Because originally, the, when the scope was put together, they really wanted to wrap, actually, it was June of this year of 2023. And obviously, as we've gone, we've seen that we need a little bit of space. We need a little bit of time to go through this. And that's, I'm just reporting to you, that's fine. It's not going to put us in trouble with Executive Office Environmental Affairs. And of course, we have the money, like I mentioned, but
Yep.
Which is important. So, I think then I would shift back to the top.
Okay. Unless you want to finish out your town plan or updates.
I suppose I could, if you want.
Might as well.
Might as well. All right. So, we did, in terms of the top of the planner update, in terms of citizen volunteer, we have received two citizens that Aaron Hunt, I think you
Familiar name.
Familiar name.
Sounds familiar, yeah.
Yep. He's put his name forward.
That's great.
That was District One.
So, he's District One.
Yep, Precinct One.
Precinct One, that's right.
And then, Charles Iacona is
Precinct Three.
Precinct Three, yeah.
Okay.
And then, I just got an email before the meeting on another individual who expressed interest. I do not know with precinct.
Okay.
But, so I'll reach out to him.
We're hoping it's two or four.
Hopefully, two or four. But, so in terms of the citizen, that things have turned a little better from, from the flyer went out.
It's awesome.
Halfway there.
I just posted it on the Norfolk Community page.
Norfolk Community page.
Great. And if you want, we could take some
Yeah, we'll take some flyers for tomorrow for town meeting. Yep. I think that would be awesome to do that. I think we're also going to print up some surveys for the hazard mitigation plan that's going on. We did have that meeting in December. We certainly didn't get as much response, survey response. So, we're going to try to keep it out there to get, I know you attended the meeting. And so, anyway, we're going to put that out there to get a little more feedback on that. But back to the master plan. So, in terms of the composition, we had nine, I think we were sitting at, four, no, it wasn't not nine, sorry. It's more than that. It was larger than that.
More than that.
Five, six planning board members.
Right.
Four citizens.
Right.
We had select board, conservation commission, park and recreation. And I think, we talked about this before, but in terms of advisory board, I think technically, they can't
Yeah, I think, right. Technically, they can't.
By law, they can't. But it would be wonderful if they had, I will call an ambassador or whatever you want to call it, to be regularly attending master plan meetings going along.
Right.
So
And I suppose if we didn't talk about it, or did we, you, I guess, if you did have a couple, if you had multiple from a certain precinct, we could have a couple other, like, citizens at large, I guess you could say. I don't know if we talked about that or not, but
No.
We'll cross that bridge and we
We did mention about keeping the number of chefs in the kitchen to a smaller number.
Yeah. Because we're getting now
That's about 15, right?
Yeah. We're at like 12 to 15.
Pretty, pretty big.
Did we get buy-in from the other boards? Or is it, we're, we're just asking and hoping?
So, the next step would be
anticipating.
Draft a letter and then the chair, and we send it to the, to that body. And a little bit background, we would like to have a representative from your board sit on the master plan steering committee. And if you could talk amongst yourselves, figure out who that person might be, and then get back to us.
I think I heard you was trying to sell it to the conservation.
That was selling. I was doing those
I didn't know if there was a sale yet or not, but
No. So, yeah, I'm always selling, sorry. But, so I, so they're, well, they're going to be selling to you guys, because they're going to be working on the open space recreation plan.
Awesome.
So, that's going to be another planning thing that's going to be going on in '23.
Big planning year.
Yeah, a big planning year. Didn't know that. Thinking ahead, should have planned for that. But so, we'll, not a bad joke, but
That's so funny.
So, so I would say, unless you had any other, so I would, I guess I'm going to craft a letter to the advisory board in terms of, send it to you, like an ambassador. I think Josh had some nice language to kind of
Well, I fully agree. We need some
But they need to be there.
Yeah. And if, right.
It's really critical, right?
Yeah, it's very critical that they're part of this. But, yeah.
If we could, if we had fantastic power, we would probably go in and amend that bylaw right now, the advisory board, you know, the general bylaw.
Right, right, right.
Say, hey, you know, there are some things that you, that body should participate in, but that's not the case.
But I, I don't remember exactly what bylaw it is off the top of my head. But I do understand there's probably, it's written that way to have separation so that, because they are advisory committee, not a board, but a committee. And so, that it's probably designed to have that wall there so that they're not part of it.
And they see it the same way the citizens would see it in town. I, for one, I think we should keep it as
But I do like this ambassador type, they're, somebody that can give them frequent updates. And keep them, just keep them in the loop.
Yeah, keep them in the loop. I mean, it's not invited. If they, you know, they're a citizen anyway, so they can participate anyway.
Right.
It's just
Under, you know, citizen at large kind of capacity as opposed to someone who would actively participate.
Yeah. So, none of the, at least so far, none of the people have stepped forward from the advisory board. But
Right.
Or we can just not include it. So, we can, I don't know what that number is. So, it says six, four is 10, select board, conservation, park and rec, that makes it 13. If you want to, it doesn't preclude you from ad-han, I suppose, if you need it, if you felt, you know, you're kind of writing the rules on this. So, there is no, they're going to be a subcommittee of the planning board. So, you'd be the pointing board. So, you know, that, that is clear. We also know the subject to the open meeting law, take a minute, so forth. So, we all know all that. It's not a permanent body. That's another topic that we'll have to start to, have to speak with council on in terms of, you know, because the ultimate goal is to have a permanent implementation committee to make sure there's, you know, oversight that the plan does get implemented. And those are, those are kind of core piece of successful master plans. That there is a committee afterwards to make sure that's. So, I know I said a lot.
A lot.
It's a lot. So, for now, you want me to draft a letter for select board, conservation, park and rec?
Yes.
Sounds good.
All right. So, we'll do that. Timing wise, I know conservation already met. So, they won't be able to really talk about it till February. So, for them, it would be March.
Right.
Select board, obviously, they meet
Twice.
They have more frequent meetings, so they can weigh in sooner. And then, I'm not sure what park and rec's next schedule is. But
Okay.
I think we'll just base it off the fact that we'll be looking at March
Okay.
To fit out. And then, hopefully, we get a couple. Maybe we have the
Well, we might get huge public interest. We might have to do interviews for these citizens.
Might, might. So, all right.
We'll see.
So, that gives it, covers that topic. I think unless there's any questions.
Nope.
All right. So, now I'm going to jump up to wastewater master plan. So, the, in terms of update with wastewater master plan, the hydrologist finished up her report and provided that to Woodward and Kern at the end of December. So, I have a meeting coming up this week, Thursday, kind of go over, they had put together a draft report, but that the hydrology report wasn't pieced in there yet. So, I want to just go over that with them this Thursday. And then, with the, would be, a minimum would be an update to the board in February from the, from the engineers. So, we'll, we'll talk about it then. The, the, the home rule petition to create the sewer district did pass through the legislature. So, that is done and is in place. So, that's, that's good news. Very good news. So, we'll, what I'll do is I'll probably have them give a, maybe more of a, see how the, the February agenda shakes out. But it could be a little bit brief. Or maybe we have a special meeting, you know, let's, we'll talk about it, because it's a very important topic. I don't want to not give it adequate time.
Right. Correct. And I want to keep the ball rolling. It seemed like we've been stagnated for the last several months. So
There has been work going on, but not at a, at a cheetah pace or
It's not.
No, it's, it's been going, it hasn't been overly fast paced. But they did do the ground penetrating radar on the conservation property as well as the park and recreation area, the, behind the Freeman Kennedy. So, so they did the whole entire, which is great. There was a window that came, that the, the person does the ground penetrating radar was available. So, that worked out. And it wasn't, it was, I think it was like $7,000 or $8,000. It wasn't an absorbent amount of money necessarily.
Big piece of land.
So, it's a, so, it's pretty good data. So, anyway, so that's the update on that. Then I'll move up to the next one, which is housing choice. So, quickly, housing choice is the one high density, multifamily zoning district for MBTA communities. That has to be at least 15 units per acre in, for density. Has to be multifamily by right. There is an action report that's due to the state at the end of January. I'll be working on with Justin and Susan, Justin Kessino Davis, Town Administrator, and Susan Jacobson, Affordable Housing Director. Submitting the action plan by January 31st keeps the, keeps Norfolk in terms of compliance with housing choice for this year. So, they, if it came up where we're looking to apply for some grant, as long as we submit an action plan, we would still be eligible for, for applying for grants. We did get a technical assistance grant from Massachusetts Housing Partnership to do analysis, assessment in terms, in order to comply with housing choice. So, they'll be looking at issues that terms of density with a potential district size. So, in terms of, you know, density, the density, the way the statute reads, but then the guidance to support the statute for Norfolk means a zoning district that's 50 acres in size, but then also has the mathematical, theoretical capacity to create 750 dwelling units, which is
Whole lot of sewer.
Wow. Which is, now, that's, I feel like we were in partnership with this, because this is, that's a great point. No, it's a theoretical mathematical model. So, those communities that have, do not have sewer, then that plays a far in the ultimate build out. So, you have to, so we don't have sewer. We have a little bit of sewer, but not that much sewer. Certainly not to create that density anywhere near that. So, so that district would be based on septic.
So, then that brings the numbers down.
Right. So, the numbers come down. So, that's the actual yield. And then, on top of it, you got to deal with stormwater. So, the actual versus the theoretical are, is a significant difference. And then, we're going to look at it and we're going to, we'll be, I'll be working with, Horsey and Witten is the consultant doing the work. I'll be working with you and all of the planning board, the select board, Affordable Housing Trust in the assessment aspect of this. That's one, the district assessment. The other one is our inclusionary bylaw is outside the limits in terms of, we have an upward limit of 20%. You have to provide economic analysis that an inclusionary bylaw up to 20% is still feasible to create housing. And so, we'd have to justify that to keep that number, or we may have to make adjustments downward to, so theirs is really based on 10%. So, anything above 10, you start to, you need to kind of provide justification for that in order to keep it. But we're going to look at that as well, right? So, that's one point. The second point is our inclusionary bylaw is by special permit. Some of the colleagues that are, they're always, so any, all the MBTA communities are all kind of like, what do we do? Right? So, we're kind of having these discussions going right now. One of my colleagues thought that you couldn't even do it by special permit, the inclusionary bylaw. So, that, I was like, I didn't even think At this point, so we want to look at these different aspects of it. Site plan review. We have site plan review now. We're going to have to look at that bylaw. It may be okay to keep as is, or may require some amendments. That kind of, I think I'd mentioned to you before, you can't do mixed use as a requirement to create housing. You can have mixed use, but it can't be a requirement in order. So, the area where we might want to look at for, if we decide to do housing choice, where it's strictly residential, might not be, you know, the whole downtown, for example. You might want to keep it out of certain areas, you know. So, anyway, so we're going to be working on all that.
So, does that mean revisiting the zoning?
It does.
Might have to.
It does.
Possibly creating another zone just for the housing choice stuff.
Yeah, it would be more like an overlay. This would be, it could be, yep, yep, very well, could be. But again, so, and the ultimate deadline is December 31st, 2024. So, that, that's the timeframe. So, the way twenty-four. So that, that's the timeframe. So the way I'm submitting this action plan, which I don't really love the title, action plan, because we could decide not, although that's an action, right? Don't do anything. But anyway, that's the plan. I'm pushing it out in terms of, you know, the time, to give us as most, as much time as possible to, to really take a look at this.
That twenty percent that you, that you referenced, to see if it's still feasible, feasible for whom?
The builder.
The builder.
Developer, to make sure that they're...
Yeah, developer.
Because if you have X number of units, because you're limited by the septic system size, based on the footprint that you're allowed, and you need to get Y revenue, then that X number of units, after they're, you know, consumed, they might not get you to that ROI point.
Right, not profitable, therefore they won't build.
Yeah.
And so on that, with regards to the affordable units, we've already heard from developers in towns that the twenty is way too high for that from a mixed-use perspective. I'm curious how that translates when it's not required to have the mixed use. But I'm also curious, you know, your deadline for this would be the twenty twenty-four timeline, so by then, we could conceivably have a plan for the sewer going forward, and installation timelines and things like that. Does that then require an amendment to your action plan?
Well, but the sewer would only be, right now, we're only proposing the sewer in a small section of the downtown, and so...
Right, but if that overlay district by any chance has any frontage where the sewer's available, then by right, they can tie in.
Right.
I think we, we're gonna, we'll take a look at it, but my quick response, I think we probably would design in a way that we're, if we do the sewer, we're bringing it to where we want to generate commercial and mixed-use development, and not necessarily where it's gonna be, you know, just straight out residential housing production. Because we, we did hear how that really played a part in the mixed-use end of it. So we would have to work hand in hand, so that way, if, if the sewer does happen, it's where we want the sewer to go to aid potential development redevelopment, not where this discussion, you know, the, the housing piece would be, so that there isn't a, you know, a by, you know, a right that the pipes there, like, hey, you have to let me tie into it. So...
Oh, you said it's based on capacity, and it would be first in, first sold?
Yeah, first in, first sold. And the other, so what I do know is, from the district that was approved from town meeting in the spring, was much more expansive than we're thinking about in terms of sewer. There's a bunch of properties that have changed out. So a minimum, if the sewer does go far, we're gonna have to amend the district boundaries, because there's pieces that are not, I, you know, well, for example, the houses that are on, in your, actually, your development were way back when potentially gonna be considered for commercial, in that, we're talking about twenty-ten now. Those are now houses, they're not, they're not commercial, potential commercial. So there's a bunch of properties that within that twenty-ten map, we'll go over it again, we'll look, we'll show you, you know, we'll revisit it, but it would need amendments. And then we would also need to be able to create the rules and regulations for sewer connections, charges, you know, specifications. So there's, there's quite a bit.
I just want to make sure that we're not shooting ourselves in the foot with your action plan and the sewer.
No, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah. No, no, I think, yeah.
That's a good point. Yeah, we want to be very mindful about where, how everything...
It's an interesting tool that we can utilize. I mean, if we don't have sewer, then we under, we're undersizing the, the area, essentially. And it's not getting as dense as it potentially could, which is a great middle ground for this nice sleepy neighborhood farm-first community. And if this is something that we absolutely have to do, those are the bounds by which I'd like to push it forward, as opposed to, crap, we've got sewer plans, now we have to build to the max. You know what I mean?
And the one, the caveat, well, I shouldn't say caveat, but, so in terms of, a lot of the literature now talks about required, which I, in some sense, I get what they're trying to say in terms of required due to housing choice. But the requirement is tied to financial incentives, which are grants. Now, having said that, we've already been in those same areas, getting grant money for the town, so it may not, you know, it may be, in essence, almost required for the town of Norfolk to, to do this, because we have done it before with grants. But let's see as this kind of unfolds. But I wanted to let you know, so that, so in terms of the work with the consultant, we're, we're talking the, you know, basically, essentially, from this point to June, because it's supposed to be wrapped up by June twenty-three. It's not gonna be, you know, we're not, it's gonna be analysis, there's nothing gonna, we're not coming out of it necessarily with something in June, per se. You know, we're not really rolling into town meeting, but, so anyway, I just want to.
Thank you.
All right, we talked about the master plan, so.
Yep.
Talked about the compositions. Now we go back to the top.
Right. So now we go back to the signed bylaw.
Signed bylaw.
Opposed amendment for the signed bylaw.
Yes.
So we, so you drafted up...
So what I did is I draft up sign bylaw changes based on the sign roadshow with Melissa and Gary.
Did you two review this already?
Yes, yeah.
So...
Just a couple of comments that I had for it.
So in terms of, yeah, she had a couple of comments, and we'll, I emailed them, I think, to you.
Yeah, I can't open that, it's...
Can't open it?
Oh, let me, let me share it with you.
She has control there.
Send it to you.
So anyway, what I wanted to say is that the signed bylaw changes for tonight, I just want you to topically look at what's being proposed, make some choice. You could pick it all or not to carry it forward. The idea would be to carry it forward and have hearings for this in March. So, you know, the warrant's gonna open up in February, and we want to try to, you know, build the product different, well, the process a little bit differently to kind of refine it, so that way, it's in final language form when it goes on the warrant, and then it goes to hearing, and then when it goes to advisory, at that point, you've already had a public hearing. But invite advisory to, well, certainly invite, they're always welcome, obviously, but, to the public hearing, for sure. And then, when you go before advisory, then, you know, they've got the final product they'll, they'll be looking at. Now, the one thing I did learn today, which is a little bit disappointing, is that the Attorney General's Office did not approve our May recodification yet. Today was the deadline. They've requested a ninety-day extension.
Do we have to honor a ninety-day extension?
Can you go back and just tell them, no, you got nine, though?
So I haven't had a one-on-one battle with the Attorney General's Office of Massachusetts when it comes to zoning yet. I don't know if I really want to, but it'll be fun. But all kidding aside, so what that means to me is I need to get back to you all as a body and say, because, again, we'd be bringing zoning, that hasn't been publicly been consumed, because they weren't, so two things. One is Ecode's not gonna release it until they get the final blessing.
Right.
So therefore, what you will go on our website is...
It doesn't tie to what...
Doesn't tie to what...
Still on this stuff.
Yeah, you're still, you're still in the orange book.
Right.
Which is really not great, you know?
Well, right.
But anyway, so what I want to do is talk to town council to see if, I know they, what I've heard back is they're fine with the Ecode, but in terms of the formatting and so forth, I understand. However, we haven't released it to the public, which is really kind of...
Well, that's where I think, and I mentioned this earlier, is that, not, not publicly, but I mentioned it to you earlier today, is that can we have, I don't know what the recommend, you know, their recommend... Look, you got thirty days, but I think the underlying issue is that we need them just, whatever their other issue is, can we at least get the E, can you at least say Ecode's good to go? You know, if there's another issue, put that on pause, you can, maybe we'll let them have the ninety days on that, but can we get with, you know, can we just get the blessing to move forward with Ecode? Because it really is complicating things.
What is it that they're, why are they holding it up? Why do they need ninety days?
So their issue, well, the holdup is from the Nature Center, when we did the Nature Center amendment to the bylaw for the Wyland, Leon Wild property.
So their concern is one change.
So let me back up, just for transparency. They were, Mass Autobahn challenged that provision in our zoning bylaw, so that's...
After it was voted on?
Yes. With the Attorney General Office to try to have it stricken from our bylaws. So that's...
Okay, so let's take that, put that on pause.
So that's...
Put it off to the side, and can we get that Ecode?
Yeah. Can we just take that, you know, some of us had talked about this, some weren't here yet, but can we just take that one piece that was technically new, and then they can put everything that was already agreed upon in the past into Ecode?
So I'll, I'll rephrase it a little bit differently from you, is just carve out that stuff, and we'll, because everything was new, because we did the recodification. But anyway, I, I know exactly what you're saying. So if they could give us the opportunity to, or at least put it out there, say something, because it's really just, it's hard to go to town meeting with this. So the signed one is one thing, but then the table allowable uses...
Right, because they're holding up everything because of this one, one change that we made. That just, it's becoming absurd. So I think that's where, where you should talk to town council about, how, how do we carve that, like you said, carve that piece out, approve the rest, so we can move on, because it's really getting cluttered and cumbersome.
Right. So what I would just propose for tonight, we kind of go through this, and then I'm gonna have to get to council, kind of get some guidance, and then, so I don't, you know, the original goal was actually hold a hearing on the table in February.
I think we could still hold it, can't we?
We could, but not for the February thirteenth meeting. I think we're, I'd be pushing it.
Okay.
I mean, just in terms of, do our due diligence, you know, not due diligence, but we could, we could try.
Okay.
I don't want to say no, but I'd be, I just hate to schedule something based off of, you know, council, like, if they need to do some work to kind of get us an answer. That's my only hesitation. So let me add through this, I'm just throwing a spitball idea. Could we maybe do a special Zoom meeting on the zoning? But we would do it different this time. We would put in the notice that it was via Zoom, so we don't have, we learned that already, the AG called us out on that, but for that, if you want. So just have a different day in February than the thirteenth, because I think I do the math, we're kind of, let me see.
How about we really try to target the thirteenth, and if needed, we...
Yeah, there's not a ton of days in February with vacations and everything, so.
Not a ton of days in February.
In general.
True, true.
Not, not a ton of days.
I would need, I think I would need to get the, we'll add to the sun chronicle rich, um, twenty-five, twenty-six.
Twenty-five, twenty-six. It's not...
Yeah, because if it's not ready by the thirteenth, the week after that's vacation. There's two days, after that, there's two days left in the month, so we're better off just doing the March meeting.
Right. Which is the... Yeah, you're right, Gary. If we can't do it the thirteenth of February, then it kind of punts it all to March, just because of other things that are going on in March.
Yeah.
But, and, so, but we should still go through.
We're gonna go through it, yeah, yeah.
This.
Because I was gonna go...
I had a couple of questions, and I saw a typo somewhere.
I just want to tell you ahead of time, that way you kind of, as we go through it.
Please keep us updated, but I mean, that would be my recommendation, is if you could get with town council and, 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 I guess the first question is, do we have to allow ninety days? Can we counter at thirty? And can we also counter at, can you just approve the Ecode minus this? Approve everything minus that.
Well, we didn't negotiate the last time, so I don't know if we're gonna negotiate this time. Maybe we might have a...
I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know what, I...
Yeah.
It seems pretty reasonable, really. I mean, all of the other stuff isn't, isn't new, and it's not contentious.
It does, sitting in this room, doesn't it?
It does.
But it might not be.
Might not be.
And we'll say, sitting in the room, it seems very reasonable, but, you know.
Again, this is where, would be where town council would have...
So what we did, so Melissa did go through it, and so she has some comments that are on the screen there to go through with you all, and...
Yeah, so that first one there, Rich, the reason I highlighted it and said, should we remove this section, just the highlighted section, so number one says, no signs or advertising devices of any kind or nature shall be erected on any premises. But then we mentioned the sandwich board signs below in the table. So I just wanted to check and see if that's the, if that's referring to the same thing, or if that's some separate line item that we need to keep there.
So that clause in the sentence there is really, covers all, every sign?
That's your catch-all. That's basically saying that you can't have a sign unless it's allowed in these areas.
So it's like an order of operation thing, so, order one is no signs by default, but then order two is internally illuminated signs, maybe a little bit, okay, I think I get what you're trying to say.
So start, yeah, so then, so that one I would, that one I would keep.
Okay.
Now, the other one, the next one down, in terms of the flashing sign.
Yep, so that there, so no sign using flashing or intermittent lights, that before was all, that was all, all had the strike through. I removed the strike through from the no sign using flashing lights, because I think in general, we, really the goal is to have the illuminated lights and the signs that are, you know, cute for the town center and aren't super expensive. But I don't think that we want to now introduce flashing lights, that seems like a big...
Eat at Joe's?
Yeah. It feels like a, kind of a big change, and I'm, I'm sure...
Yeah, so before you said the strike through is through no, no sign using flashing?
Yes, yep. And so I ended that.
That's, yep, that's a good...
It could probably be looped into number three, right? Because we're already identifying no, no signs shall obstruct or interfere traffic, create...
The flashing light part?
Yeah.
Well, but three does very specific to traffic.
Yeah, okay, I misread that, sorry.
And I thought we were approaching amenable to the painted directly on building surfaces piece.
Yeah, so we met with Bob Bullock the other day. I set up a meeting with him. Rich was thankfully available, because it was great to have the three of us there. And that was presented here, last meeting, I believe, or the one before. We went through all of the graphics of kind of the sample of what we're going for, and, you know, that we would like to show the images at town meeting, so people understand it's not just in text, and we want to show, you know, this is an example of what we mean. And when we got to the slide about painting directly onto the brick building, it would have to be brick or stucco, really, because I don't think we want, you know, anybody painting a sign on vinyl. And he was like, well, you only have really two buildings as of now in town. One of them is about to be knocked down and made into all residential. And the other one, there's like a tiny little section where you'd even be able to put a sign unless it's on the backside. And so we were thinking that, since we do have a lot of different signs to go through at the town meeting, maybe we should take that one out for now, since it really doesn't apply to any buildings except one, and it hasn't been requested ever for that building.
I guess that's fair. And we've pretty much excluded that as a building material from a design guideline perspective as well, from the B one district too, right?
I don't know. Was brick excluded?
No.
No?
No.
No.
No, it wasn't excluded, but I think clapboard, you know...
That was preferred, maybe?
Yeah, it was preferred, yeah.
Okay.
Love brick.
It can be tasteful.
Can be, I agree. So if we happen to be building a ton of buildings that are made of brick, maybe we can revisit that one at another meeting. There was also, as we were talking through it, I was realizing how specific it would need to be. The other ones aren't so much, it's, you know, you install your sign, you take your sign down.
Right.
You know, who's responsible for the painting, when, if, if the business is no longer there? You know, now we just have a brick building, and then you have, what, like a big white rectangle, who's responsible for that? And you have to talk to landlords, it just... Then you have to talk to landlords. It just seemed way more complicated than all of the other ones as well. Um, and for only one building potentially in town.
Yep.
So we thought maybe we should remove that one for this particular.
That's fair.
Town meeting.
Little white light next.
Yeah. Good to find that, huh?
So I was thinking about, we could, we could, oh, so the, well, the other thing we did talk about, just kind of companion to this. Is that slide deck that Melissa put together and Gary reviewed it. I'm going to exclude you, Gary.
I literally just looked at it. Melissa did all the.
And came.
All right. Let's give her all the credit. All right. Is it okay to give her all the credit?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Wow. Makes it easy.
All right. Why do you want to exclude you?
Gary's not even taking one or two percent?
If it bombs.
Oh, there you go.
And it's recorded.
She did all the work.
Yeah. Good strategy.
Such a great teammate.
That we could take the, as this bylaw advances, we could put together, it won't be an official guideline book. But we can have it for the board to use as a guide when signs come in. Cause as you get to it, internally illuminated signs would be special permit through the planning board. I know that we're going to go further down. But, so we don't necessarily have to put it in the bylaw. We, you could use it. You could assign the, the, you know, the color, the temperature, sorry.
The temperature. Oh, for the white light. Yeah. So there's, I think there might be two different things here. So for number, what would be six here, um, used to be five, externally illuminated signs may be lit with white light only. So this was not one that you planned on changing, like it wasn't included in the updates.
Yeah.
And I know that we had talked about having it for the illuminated signs. Do we also want to add it for the uplit and downlit externally lit?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Signs. So I don't know. Cause we had talked about it previously, having the consistency, but now we're adding one that currently isn't an issue. And it's one more item that would need to be approved at town meeting. Um, and so I don't know. I didn't know if you guys wanted to add that. So we're consistent across.
Do you add the light?
So she put the temperatures in.
You put the temperature in which.
I didn't have it in the.
I didn't see it anywhere.
It's not in the written document. It's only in that presentation.
Is there a way in, in the bylaws to define white light? Yeah. All right. So we'll revisit this in March. Now, is, is, is there a way to just have white? Oh, right. Yeah. Now I get the joke. Yeah. Cause so I was, cause I was going to say, is there a way to have white light underlined as a, as a callback reference to a definition for white light?
Nope.
But you, there are definitions.
We, it could be if you define it.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are.
So if we define white light as a color range, then that would apply wholesale across any.
The question is, is it an issue with externally lit signs or now white?
But you, you know, it's not going to affect people that already, well, I guess it would, right? We, there'd have to be like some sort of grandfather clause if somebody's not already in that. But it would be nice looking forward to have some sort of uniform.
Consistency, if we're going to be building more residences and.
And you have that nostalgic yellowy white light versus that LED bright white.
The question is, is do we want to introduce that now and have a, have this fail because of that one piece? Or do we bring it back later and define it later across the whole thing?
Right. Right. Do we seem too restrictive? Like now that's not there. It just says white light. So do we want to say that, you know, now we're going to, assuming that this will pass for the internally illuminated signs? Maybe that's the one that we say, and it will be all consistent because that's the one right now that nobody, you know, it's just such an unknown. What?
So I actually agree with you completely, but I'm going to play devil's advocate on this because one of our asks, which we've already kind of pushed to the side and made arguments against is this whole hog, like full blown, you know, complete sign bylaw, right? And I think the idea was have as much control as feasible, right? So white light kind of fits into that scope. That said, that was just playing devil's advocate.
No.
Yeah.
I, I know that was one of the comments from advisory when we originally discussed or kind of pitched this to him last fall was we, we want to see specific color.
Comprehensive.
And I was like, yeah, comprehensive. And it's like, it's tough to put together a full comprehensive plan. Um, and also get it and sell it to the town and get it approved.
Right.
And, and we, we kind of took the approach, well, let's see what we can make happen now. Because as we've discussed, the, these bylaws are, you know, kind of living, breathing, evolving documents. Um, that should evolve as the community evolves.
So can we utilize this as putting together a framework and then reach out to the design guideline committee? Uh, ask them to kind of formalize what they think from a, a temperature perspective or additional bounds by which we should work. And then push that through in our second revision.
Yeah.
And then utilize it in the meantime as our guidelines.
Right.
If people come to us for special permit.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
So we're sort of, we actually are doing that in a way. We get asked their input on it. So basically what Melissa's put together is some design standards in that slide deck that we can get their feedback on.
Yep.
Cause it has the temperature of the lighting. And then this is for external though, so these would just be essentially by right, you know, put a sign up and it's lit.
Right.
So that would be a situation, you know, where.
Right. But I mean, we can always come down the road as well. Like if we decide to make a change to the color temperature and somebody wants to go out there with a photo meter and, you know, check the temperatures on these things and we have people that are out of compliance, we can have a fund to replace light bulbs across the town if we really needed it. Like, that's not a lot of money.
No, no, no.
You know, I don't want to inconvenience the people of the town based on our, you know, attempt to get something that works for as many people as possible across the board right now.
And we did say before that we would propose a slight range and then Chad, I know you were like, well, we could just simplify it and say, you know, it's 4,000. For the, for the temperature.
Mm-hmm.
But we could just keep that range. I mean, I haven't, I promise you, I would notice if there was something around here that was a light that was too blue. I would, I would offer to replace it myself. Um, and I haven't noticed that. Um, but you know, going forward, we should have something where if we're, hopefully we'll have more businesses. We can have that consistency. So you're playing devil's advocate. Maybe we, maybe we do, well, maybe I talk to the design.
I think talk to the design and see where they're at.
See what they think and.
I mean, I don't think we're opening ourselves up to anything, you know, dangerous or, you know, allowed for malicious compliance or anything like that. That's, you know, really going to do the town any harm or anything. So. I say we play it as it is written currently and go from there.
Okay.
I did have a question on number four.
Projecting signs?
The projecting signs. So you, you're not including districts C1A, C1B and C1C. So was there a reason why? But you do include it in number two.
What's a projecting sign? Sorry.
Um, so those were the ones. Sorry. I wish I had the printout. The ones that, so right now you can only have signs that are um.
Base mounted.
Yeah, right onto the building.
Yeah.
Um, they can only come out 12 inches.
Right.
If you want one of those signs that are more like the cafe sign where it's like the stand that comes out and that would be a projecting sign. They come out more than 12 inches.
Good.
I was going to ask you that as well, Rich. I wasn't sure if you meant to say C1 through C4 and C6 um, on number four. Because it does outline above B1 inner and outer, C1, C1A, C1B. Um, so whatever it is, we should just be consistent between those ones.
Yeah, I think it was initially, and C6 might be a little, I was thinking certainly the B1, um, inner and outer.
Mm-hmm.
And the C1 in terms of just the uses that.
But shouldn't they be the same or not?
Um, it could, so it could be. My rationale why I differentiate it was because of the business types in the, in the center town. And then the on highway might be more apt to have a projecting sign where, you know, the, the off highways, the off highway businesses, they. Having said all that, I could keep it all in there and allow the ball.
They probably won't. I mean, if you look over at, you know, if you're, yeah, they probably won't, but just to keep it consistent, maybe we should.
Ask you why, why they're different.
I, that's why I asked the question. I'm like, why are, why is it?
I did.
What was the rationale? Okay. No, I, that's why I asked.
But uh.
My thought would be to make them consistent.
Yeah. So I, I can swap it out.
Okay.
To be consistent.
That makes sense.
Not, no harm.
No.
Okay. All right. What else did you have Melissa?
Let me scroll. Um, Rich, you updated a couple of things here, just like number 19. You changed um, planning board here instead of SPGA. Those are just minor little things.
Yep.
Um.
Um, on the, number 10 for the table. Um, you've got 48 inches of sidewalk maintenance. Um, you might want to consider making that 60 inches uh, for wheelchairs to do turns if needed.
So.
ADA issue.
This was, yeah. So Rich and I were talking about that. I assumed that was the issue, why you couldn't have them directly on the sidewalk. And our sidewalks aren't really wide. Um, so Rich looked up the dimensions online.
So 48 is o, is okay clearance? Not for, I'm looking at about in terms of turning, I just look for.
Going by.
Going by.
Gotcha. So that means that every device should have at least a minimum radius of 30 inches for wheelchairs and 47 inches for electric wheelchair. So that's from 2017. The new ADA one. Uh, turning space should be a space of 60 inches diameter minimum.
But you have to maintain a turning space across the whole thing, I guess.
Yeah.
Could always ask legal.
Maybe that's at a crosswalk or somewhere, the intersection.
I mean, I can't imagine you'd have to have a turning space across the whole sidewalk.
I can't even think of a 60 inch sidewalk in town right now.
Oh, I know.
I'm 60 inches. I don't think I could lay down in each.
Yeah, that's true. But.
Um, there's, well, here in the center, it is obviously, it's cause you, you've got it on the, on the lot to the easement. You know, you could consider a sidewalk in the B1 over here on Liberty Lane.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Cause it's.
Yep.
It's almost more like a plaza, so to speak.
So.
Sidewalk, sidewalk. Allow for signs there where there's no buildings.
What's that?
Can't do that because that's actually on a different lineup.
So also regarding that, number 10, that, that statement, it's, it's a little, I don't know if it's grammatically correct. It says a minimum clear sidewalk width of, should that be width and not width?
That should be width.
Okay.
Not width.
With a D.
With a D.
Okay.
Yes. Good, good catch.
I'm reading the uh, two feet wide by three feet high. The ones that I've made and put up in the past have been two by four. Just because it's easy to rip from a full sheet of plywood and, you know, we had many of those in 10.
Oh, yeah. Size.
Instead of uh, three foot, they were totally made out of four foot, just because that's what the material was.
Okay. Did you find the 24 by 36? Did you find that on like a different bylaw website? Oh, okay.
So what I have in here, you mean two by three?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I did, but I mean, if you're comfortable with two by four, I mean.
Oh, we, I, I organized bike races and we would put these up for directional signs and we cut plywood and two by four and painted them and put them up.
Yeah, that's not bad. I mean, you think about it, when they open up anyway, they're going to be a little.
Yep.
Shorter. It's not that.
Hopefully you can get your message on.
Yeah.
Yep.
Six square feet. We were giving you eight square, square feet here.
And some of them have frames, which then takes in your space that you can write on. Two by four is fine.
I'll make that change too to.
Um, so on.
Entrance one too, though. That was a, right? In that same one, the location. Should the main entrance to the, should be the main entrance.
Oh, the 30 feet one where I highlighted it. Yeah. So my question there is, so the sandwich board sign or the A frame sign, 30 feet from the main entrance. What I was thinking is that would work probably for the B1, like the um, C and K apparel. I think that would be approximately 30 feet to the sidewalk or the mulch beds. And then I was thinking if you're somebody that's over where, you know, like that new gun place might be at some point.
Crawley's, yeah.
Yeah. Um, it's going to be more than 30 feet to where they would want to put a sign. For people to know that they're there. And I know there's been, you know, like there was a Chinese restaurant um, next to Aroma and it was closed before I even knew it was there. So, you know, like locations like that, they would probably, it might be more than 30 feet. And I don't know how strict Bob is with his 30 feet. So I just thought.
But those, those plazas have other avenues by which they can put up signs. Yeah, but these are, these are temporary.
This is, this is for the sandwich board style.
Yeah, yeah. I mean. About instead of from main entrance or. I would assume a sandwich board would be. Driving entrance. Where there's sidewalks for the most part. I mean, some of those areas, they don't have sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
I'd be more concerned with those things flying in the wind, getting in the way of the vehicles on those high traffic.
Too close to the road.
Right.
Yeah. If they were a little further back or.
And then they're not readable at that size, especially from a vehicle that's passing by. So I don't see the benefit for those kinds of areas.
Okay. So you think focus more on kind of the downtown district here where people are driving through in the 30 feet wouldn't be an issue?
Walking.
Walking, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, this gives us something to start with and then we can collect feedback and see what we missed.
I might want to, let me just double check that distance though, because 30 might, so I'm thinking of C and K. That might not be enough though. To get it out by the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
That might be too close. I mean, not far enough.
Yeah.
You also, businesses where the driveway. Business owner to see if anything happens to it.
What's that?
You want it to be close enough to the business owner so that they can see if there's anything happening to it. Like if it does fly away in the wind.
Right.
Or some kid decides to kick it on a half day.
Right.
True.
Or maybe 30 feet from the building. Like then, now I'm thinking about River's Edge. So like where Jen's dance studio is, right? So her door is definitely more than 30 feet away from that. Um, piece of, well, there is a sidewalk there, but even if it was inside that, you know, there's like a little.
There's that long area.
Pathway and there's a lawn. So that wouldn't necessarily, I don't know how strict Bob is. So I don't know, I don't want to put this in place and then have Bob say, oh, it's more than 30 feet. You have to move your sign. So that's why I was thinking like, could it be 30 feet from the building, not necessarily where her door is, you know? Cause her building, her particular suite is like around the.
Seems like you'd want that sign out on Rockwood Road and where cars can see it. So within 30 feet isn't going to help you.
Right.
Yeah, but it's a sandwich board sign on Rockwood War Road when you're driving by, are you really going to be able to write eight inch letters or you, I mean, maybe you can read it.
You see the one that says coffee.
Yeah. I guess if it's just.
I see the ones that say Anne's Market.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're right. Okay.
So this is 30 feet.
From the main entrance.
Entrance to the business.
That's nothing.
It's not very far.
No. Two parking.
So that would preclude them from doing what they're doing now. I'm thinking that's over 30.
Anne's Market.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we gotta do some research on that. Get the.
We need to, yeah.
Get the rulers out and figure out what the ideal distance is.
I mean, we're not going to find a.
Within sight, maybe.
satisfy every situation.
No, we're not.
Yeah.
Within sight.
Do you even put a distance?
On property.
Well, that's what I'm think, getting at is, is do you put a distance at all?
I vote no for the distance and the owner needs to have, you know, contact information on the sign. You know, should the sign be misplaced or put somewhere else? That way somebody can look at it and say, oh, hey, this is Anne's Market sign. Let's go bring it back to her or call them and let them know where it is, kind of a thing. Like, I think there needs to be some sort of ownership from that perspective. And then the onus is on the, the business owner to do what's right with it as opposed to us really policing it.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I mean, aside from the wheelchair access, which um, you know, I certainly don't want to get in the way of, and I don't think any of the business owners do either. Um, you know, do we need, do we really need a distance? Um, I mean, and then Anne's Market totally understand that maybe you can't find them, but theirs is almost like detour signs, like everywhere you go. Um, so I don't know.
With, with that, with that plaza, the location kind of limits the distance safely, right? And I think for most of the buildings here in B1, the same thing applies. You're, you're really not gonna, there's really not too many ways to go way outside of whatever arbitrary distance we would set. So they offer 1A, there's a little, you know, like some, there's some, there's some bigger spaces, but I don't think, there's just not enough businesses that I, I just don't think they're gonna.
Run on sandwich boards and see them all lined up on.
So what if I just.
You know what though? I did see on uh, for only prettier, they have them out there.
We do.
And, and I can read them, but I'm also looking for it because I want to know what's on sale. But the, so they have theirs. Yeah, for sure. And then also their other location and rent them, they do the same thing.
Yep.
Um, and when you're stopped, you know, if you're getting gas, which happens to be right across the street, you can see it. And if you're stopped because KP traffic is really backed up, you can see it. Want them to be, be able to, and you know, the 30 feet would certainly be limiting and let them decide if it's worth. And, you know, the 30 feet would certainly be limiting, let them decide if it's worth it for their business.
So we just change it to one sandwich board sign per business on the property.
Can it be that vague, is that fine?
Excuse me, what's up?
Can it be that vague if we just say? I mean, we're not enforcing any sort of like fines or anything with this, right?
You know what, we didn't talk about that with Bob.
So then, I mean, really, it just amounts to us saying, hey, like your sign's over here on 115, but your business is over here on 140, what are you doing?
No, we would want it.
Yeah, it's a good.
Yeah, on the actual property, something like that.
We would have wanted on the site.
Right, so maybe that's all we say is on the property.
Side, yeah.
Sign constructed of rough plywood is.
Yeah.
Right, 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 that was a good one.
One sandwich board sign per business.
The following is prohibited, a signed frame constructed of rough cut plywood cardboard paper.
I liked that, Rich, actually, yeah.
That, that was pretty good, because, yeah.
You just never know.
You don't know.
No paper mache signs.
So on, this is just a kind of a housekeeping thing, on nine and 10, the no is not bold. It should be bold, right?
Hmm, it's not bold anywhere else, I think it was just bold just because that it's outlining what.
Yeah, but nine and 10 are new, so everything associated with it should be bold, right?
Yeah, good catch, yep. Excellent.
And then.
Those should be bold. So we're gonna say one sandwich board sign per business.
What do you mean with changeable letters on track that are allowed?
Um, so I didn't write that, but I assume you mean like where there's, where you put in the letters every day to put your messaging.
Sandwich board has the replacement.
Right, why, why wouldn't you want that? It seems like as a business, that's how you change your message.
So with the sandwich board ones, though, I think it's more of an aesthetic thing.
Chalkboard.
The chalkboard is pretty common, you can just change it out every day, I guess, I mean, the letters are pretty, you don't see that as much anymore.
We have those in the lion's share and we put those out.
Yeah, I use those for cultural council, we put those.
You do?
Yeah, but we gotta get, we gotta go to a select board for that.
I think we're sort of having a little bit higher bar, like you're, as a, I understand, because if you go to your slide deck, those are the letters that are in that sign that we don't want to have, right?
Right, right, the Dairy Queen stuff.
The Dairy Queen, those changeable letters are just kind of.
Up your game, apparently.
But, so, all right, but that's, that's a good question, because so like it's not like the whole.
Seen there, or would they say they'd like to be able to use those, they're easy.
They are easy, but we are.
Well, they're not aesthetically nice, so I get the perspective from the, from, you know, us allowing signs, but now it brings up a quick, like, what, what happens to existing sandwich boards for, for like town committees and stuff? We can't use those anymore? I'm just asking the question because I haven't thought about it until right now. Crap, we dropped this money on sandwich board and letters, I have a whole bag of letters, you know? They're like t-shirts, $20, tote bags, $25.
Well, I guess in the spirit of that town meeting where we're trying to create some special carve out exceptions to town, we were talking about internal illumination versus private business, you're probably going to have to step up your game.
He's just telling you step up your game, apparently.
No, he's telling you without telling you that you can always take out that provision if you want. We're gonna have, oh.
It's what's best for town, not what's best for cultural council.
Eat it or. It's a fair point, so.
So like.
These things are all going to come in the podium hearing and the discussion.
Doing these bylaw changes.
Lions.
So, all right, but, but here's another thing, yeah, because like the, like the Santa parade board that goes up, you know, where, you know.
Yeah, well, we have in our office for public health events too, so.
I mean, they're not that bad, really, I mean.
But do you want every business to be like, you know, sandwiches today, $3 suit.
Did you see our sandwich boards?
Yeah, meatball special or whatever.
How many of those are you, like, it's cute.
How many are you willing to accept?
Let me go get you a sign.
We're gonna.
Betsy's gonna get it.
I'm laughing, I gotta see this.
Rich, while she's doing that, I have a question on number two. The, on number two, number 20, the number 20 is bold, why?
You're proofreading all my emails.
Number two?
Yeah, page three, so page three on the chart.
It is bold.
Under advertising.
Is 20 new?
Yeah, it says, uh, goods and services rendered with a size not exceeding 20 square feet and the, and 20, those two letters, 2-0, are bold. I'm like, is that new?
You're supposed to yell it when you say it. You're missing the excitement.
I'm looking on the wrong copy because of.
Oh, okay.
Well, it doesn't.
This is where you go here.
So you said number 20?
Yeah, well, it's number two, page three.
There you go. Page three.
Oh, yeah, we might have to, those are pretty common.
Yeah.
Yeah, you see those a lot. Can we get this on video for the, the party on Zoom and YouTube? He's got it.
Does the size even comply?
Two by four.
Can you show me where, I'm drawing.
This is 20, why is that bold?
Oh.
Should be.
Thinking it should not be bold.
It should not be, no, because I didn't change any.
Because you didn't change anything, that's like.
It used to be an inclusion?
So.
No.
I guess we can't do anything different, right, because that's what came up previously, however.
That was my big contention. But every town has exceptions for their municipal.
I, I understand, but, but it was very clear, loud and clear at that town meeting, that I think folks were like, no, we're not going to create exceptions for the town.
Yeah.
That's right, we're not right.
Right, and I want to stay true to that fire that the town lit under us and the reason why we're back here today.
Well, so.
I am okay with this personally, because I do not know a business owner that is going to look at that and say, this represents my brand, I'm going to put it outside.
Right, yeah, yeah, right.
I am absolutely okay with this.
Okay.
So we should strike that then from the.
That one there, you're okay with?
Absolutely, yes.
Oh, my God.
All right, and if there are complaints about it.
Then we can adjust.
Adjustments, yeah, yeah.
And then, you know, we can revisit how we procure additional funding for the replacement of existing signs for the town.
Yeah. All right, so you missed.
Speaking of signs for the town, though.
So in, in number two, shouldn't be bold, it should, we're not changing the square footage. And on page three.
So this goes away?
Um, yeah. It's just the number 20, the 2-0.
Right there, see that number 20 is.
Oh, oh.
So that, that goes away. So we've had a lot of discussion, a little bit bouncing, so I just want to. So for the sandwich board location, we're going to say, start there and then I'll work backwards.
That was making sure it's on the property.
On the property.
Of the business.
Of the business.
But with no distance. With no distance, oh, yeah, we'll take it out, so.
No distance.
One sandwich board sign per business on the property, whether on a public sidewalk or pri.
Just on property.
On the property, yeah.
Right, and do we.
And then we delete the private.
Do we need to put anything in there that protects the landlord? Saying, you know, as described by your landlord's agreement or your, any of that stuff? I think that's.
That's a business.
Personal matter.
Yeah. So, so we don't need private. Let's see how much more sign for, for business on the property, whether on the public sidewalk. So we don't need private property then, that doesn't make any sense.
I was gonna go out and buy one of these tomorrow.
What?
No. Doesn't represent my brand appropriately.
I'm gonna buy that.
If you're gonna buy that and say, coming soon, signed bylaws, go. And then put a check in for morale on it.
So the rough, the Eric Diamond sign, rough cut lumber, where's that Eric in here?
It's a couple, same, same thing, number 10. Going down, it's like one, two, three, four, five lines down. Two.
No, the fifth line down from the top, two feet wide by four feet high.
Yeah, we're changing that too, so. Two, two feet.
So Melissa's got it on the screen up there, highlighted in yellow.
Two by four, right?
How, how high is that guy, four feet?
That's what I.
That looks like if it's closed, yeah. Yeah, four feet standing up straight.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's, that's, that's a good, I like, that, yeah, that makes sense.
And then Betsy, the, when you're done with that, there was, so the, the word no on nine and 10 are, they're not bold. And they should be because they're new.
Right. And then the, the, where's the?
What do we have against whiteboards? Or magnetic letters?
Um. We didn't have anything against them, I think this was just, this was some sample language that we found, that Rich went off and did a lot of research to see what other towns did. And this was what he found as kind of a standard.
What do we mean by natural chalkboard or cork board should be used for the message area if we just said that's okay, do you?
What's that?
There's a sentence here, you're supposed to make it out of a natural chalkboard or cork board should be used for the message area.
Yeah, because we just kind of changed the parameters, didn't we?
Yeah, you changed the parameter, so no, that, that, no.
Strike the whole sentence?
Yeah, I think, I mean.
Yeah, I think you need to remove that sentence as well.
That's an example of one way to do it, but it's not.
But then the following sentence to sign lettering shall be either purchased in block format at your local Staples or, like, how do you, do we just delete the next line too? Or go lettering and numbering characters? How, how do you add, do we either delete the line or add a provision for those type of letters on that sort of? That's on the other side of this already, that's changeable letters on track, the last sentence. That's prohibited. Right, so we gotta take that out.
Right, we gotta take that out.
But then that conflicts with the sign lettering shall be either painted in a professional looking manner, computer generated or handwritten on a chalkboard. So how do we include?
That's computer generated.
Right. Okay. I'd get rid of the natural chalkboard or cork board.
Yeah, we could take that line out.
Striking that.
Definitely get rid of that, and then.
And then in the prohibited list, we gotta get rid of the changeable letters on track.
On track?
Yeah.
That's what that is.
I can understand the whiteboard piece because every high school student's dream come true is to walk by a whiteboard, a sign that they can either mess up or write their own stuff in. Magnetic letters, though, like. Same with chalkboard, though. Chalk's a little harder, you don't have chalk in your pocket. But you can still erase it. You got, you know, white, white erase, whiteboard erase markers in your pocket? Always.
Depends, actually, do you know?
Working my Sharpies.
That's part of what you have in your backpack for HOD and for Freeman.
And the, we're not going to prohibit rough cut lumber anymore, huh?
So only precision cuts from now on?
So.
No demo blade?
I think we've. The following, the following are prohibited would just go to cardboard, right?
Cardboard, cardboard, paper.
Rigid material.
Fabric or non-rigid materials or use of whiteboards, or use of whiteboards, period, I would say.
I think illumination, I mean, if we, so we don't want to have internally lit, I don't know if there are any that are even available.
I mean, they have them, they're battery powered typically.
Battery, so do we want to?
It's usually got that like wax crayon, neon.
That's right, yep.
And it's backlit on a back display.
Oh, yeah.
So what do we think about that?
That triggered the special permit?
I think it would because it's illuminated.
Illuminated, it would.
Sure.
Here it is, the cultural council have to pick this thing up and bring it in every night, put it away, that's in here right now.
Yeah.
That was actually part of the.
Do you do that?
The old requirement, and Bob said that most people don't do it, which is why he usually doesn't like to allow these signs, so.
It starts to go pick those up every night.
Yeah, they're heavy, especially the one that we have, which is weighted, it's like one of the swing ones.
And you want it to be weighted so it doesn't tip over and win.
But that said, we haven't left it out for more than a couple of days and since COVID. I mean, leaving it out should be special permit.
Well, this says you gotta take it in every night.
But if it's special permit. Under what criteria would we allow it out overnight? If it's.
No, this is, this is going to be allowed, right? This isn't special.
Yeah, this is just allowed, yeah.
But right now it says take it in every night.
I'm saying if we did allow it overnight by special permit, what would the criteria be for that?
It doesn't say that there's a.
The criteria would be that.
There, he's saying what if we added it?
Yeah, what if, what if we add that? The criteria would be that there, it is for, I want to be careful. Municipal use, say it. No, 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 no.
Can't do that.
For describing events that don't belong to a. Describing community events. Non, non-commercial. Non-commercial. Community events. Yes. Is that?
Municipal use.
No. No.
No, you're just, you're just rebranding it a different way.
What if, restate that because it doesn't.
The Lions, the Lions, when we put up signs for the Christmas tree sales or Community Day, that's not municipal use.
Right.
You know, that's a. True, it's community. That's a community. It's non-commercial community.
Non-commercial community.
Or. Commercial community.
Or you put a special provision in there to say, not allowed unless by special permit.
What's the harm of leaving it out?
Well, that's a good question, so.
No, but what's the harm with, why are we explicitly telling you can't?
Yeah, so I think something like, in, so we have to group all these together.
You get one.
In, in my mind, something like a, a big giant sign like that or a weighted sign like we have cultural council differs a lot from just a quick chalkboard style. You probably don't want those out because wind can take them, they're way, way lighter, like nothing's taking the one that I have.
Wouldn't you assume that the, the owner of that sign would want to bring it in?
Yeah.
To protect it?
Yeah, maybe we're thinking too much about this.
I mean.
So you would assume that, Bob said it doesn't happen and it seemed to bother him, so maybe I can ask him.
Yeah, well, I think the assumption is that it doesn't happen because of the same things that you're talking about. That that sign is really heavy and clunky to take in, they just leave it out sometimes, right?
Or.
So I guess the answer to some of your questions is part like the, the thought of, they are.
They're functional.
Functional.
So I think when.
I, I know, we clearly know now there, there isn't, at least the sense from that town, I mean, we, we don't have these differentials, right? So it's like, public community uses to use these type of things to alert the community on activities going on, but that's not.
We should rent that board out to the community, you got an event you want to advertise.
But if you look at that sign, if you're worried about aesthetics and design, that's, it's functional.
Right.
Oh, it's function over form. It is all function, right?
For, for context, and this, this stuff is just adding some complexities which are bound to show up, but like, you know, when we started this discussion, it was, we're thinking, think downtown Boston coffee shop saying these are specials today, it's a two foot, three foot high, two foot wide, folding, light poplar wood chalkboard, right? And so that's where a lot of this originated from. This is just, oh, wait a minute, you know, we were thinking about that and we, I think most people in town would love to see that, and I think that's what a lot of business owners are thinking, but what about the, you know, what about that guy? We, we need a name for that one.
I don't know, but that, that one is, is a good sign for a business that's form two, not necessarily aesthetics for some businesses, right?
It's easy to read, I mean, you got a very high contrast.
Yeah, do you want to see 10 of those in a row driving down the street?
I do not.
No, I, I do not.
No, I don't think people would, but at the same time, you know, that bar is.
Do we let it happen and then try to correct?
It's happening today, those, and they stay out there.
Yeah, but not, not, not en masse, right? And not for businesses. And, yeah, uh, yeah.
I mean, I know, I know that it does bother Bob, it's enough that.
Because it's in the rules as such, you can, but. Because it's in the rules as such, you can't, but.
No, the overnight thing.
Listen, technically, it's probably both for Bob, really, because technically you're not they're not allowed. They do occur. We know that.
And he's the one that has to go every single time until you to take your sign down, which must be so annoying to have to do.
If we take those provisions out, he doesn't have to do that.
Those signs everywhere, I can't imagine they would. Um it happens today, not often and not in many places. I would.
But the signs today are really tech, well, not technical. They are defining the law. They're doing it.
It's illegal.
Even though it's illegal, they're rolling the dice, so to speak. But here we're talking about changing the bylaw to allow it. So now it's not that's not the same dynamic.
That sign, uh let's let's say Linda's Variety wants that sign. It's out on the sidewalk overnight. A foot of snow comes down. We're clearing that sidewalk for schools. That thing's like in the way.
Right.
It's edge case, but it's like, you know, it's possible scenario.
No, no, it's a huge sign.
Yeah, I mean, we should absolutely have a provision for, you know, adverse weather or something like that.
But couldn't that be solved with, or I I guess the overnight thing, it's not inclusive of adverse weather because adverse weather doesn't always happen overnight.
Now, to Bob's point in one way is if if you wanted to tweak this so that if it was overnight, you did have to come to the board. That's an option. I mean, I know it's a little clunky, but.
That's the direction I was going to push it.
If you want to protect it, you bring it in tonight. If you think you take your risk with it, you leave it on tonight.
Well, I don't think it's just that, though. So this is weighted, right? Like that one is.
That one's heavy, right?
It's heavy. It's not that appealing. But now if you have the ones that are, you know, good looking, that are.
They're not heavy.
They're not heavy. And so that's the thing. If they're on the side of the road and now we have a windstorm, like I couldn't tell you how much stuff ends up in my yard around here.
I mean, those are designed to be heavy. Again, it's all function. It was designed that way.
Probably been working out.
That's for community and everybody.
This is not. It's not heavy. It's not like this could blow away.
It does. It could.
Well, yeah.
But when it does blow away and you assume like these are going to be, they're going to be in the commercial or business district. If that now flies away and hits a car and hits the windshield.
It was liable.
That's it. No sandwich boards. Forget it.
All done. You know, so like just.
Well, generally.
The light ones are the ones that are going to blow away.
The sign may be displayed only during business hours and must be removed after business uh must be removed after business hours unless by special permit.
Or during weather emergencies.
Yeah, I was going a different way, but alright.
Alright, so what way were you going?
Well, I mean, generally, you you made the point earlier. When you talk about sandwich boards and they're kind of functional from a sign perspective, it's a walkable area. You know, it's it's not car dependent, the function of them. It's, you know. I know we're kind of trying to broaden a little bit, but the ones that I've seen are usually it's a same special menu.
So you're saying limited to B one?
Yeah, it's more walkable, right. It's really intended for more walkable areas.
We don't want to limit to B one because we know there's been requests from River's Edge for it specifically.
Yeah, so over there and also only prettier mentioned that. It's right next to Eagle Brook.
Yeah, so off of one over there.
Um so there are businesses over in that in all the areas.
And part of I think part of the reason why only pretty does that is because they're kind of tucked behind.
Right, so it helps so you can see.
Eagle Brook a little bit.
Didn't they move to Retham some time?
Oh, they expanded.
They have a second one now for just florals in Retham.
Oh, okay. All right. I I felt that they moved.
And they have sandwich signs out there as well.
Yeah, they do over there.
So do we have to finalize like we have to finalize this now? Can we revisit this? Because we can kind of sleep on this and try to work.
You know what? You can't sleep on this one because this one's we're not.
Right. Can we can we look at other?
Yeah, of course.
I I think that that.
Other sandwich.
Yeah, this needs we further discussion and research. Research then discussion is the sandwich board piece because of the overnight issue.
And there's a lot of, I mean, the mission is like, are we adding value to small businesses? And there's a lot of different ways to do that. So as long as it's meeting that.
Right. And this is why it's so hard to put together a comprehensive sign plan. It's gonna, I mean.
This is just sandwich boards.
Well, it's kind of like. Or do we remove the sandwich boards for the time being while we discuss it, push everything else forward and then revisit?
I think we just ask for their input. What do you want?
Well, Rich was saying we got a little bit of time.
We did do that.
And do they like this? Have to take it in?
So we haven't seen this written document here, Rich put together for us to review. So no one has seen this other than us.
Okay.
Um and that's why we were providing the feedback. But um we did meet Gary and Rich and I met with the Small Business Association in Norfolk. Um the sandwich sign was actually one of their main. They were like, this would add so much value if we could just put them out there and have, you know, like the dance school is enrolling. Um, you know, I have these deals on custom T-shirts, you know, and they were saying that was one of the, of course, like having the visibility to the sign would be helpful, having them internally lit. But the one that they mentioned the most, I would say, is actually the sandwich signs.
Yeah, to the point where I think and I can't speak for all the small businesses in town and they're all individuals anyway, but, you know, the value by adding this at any capacity far outweighs the, you know, frustration or inconvenience of taking your sign back in, right?
Of Eric driving down the road to take in his sign.
I think as as much as you can get your message out there is what they want.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, it's true. So we should probably leave here, go and talk to some people and.
I think what we can, yeah, I think I think the easier thing, maybe easier is either either bring that to the next meeting with them or have them come here and we meet and show, hey, this is on the table, like we want to discuss it because this is not the way this is drafted. That's not allowable.
Right, right.
And so if in their mind, they're thinking, we want to be able to do this, it's good input, right? So because we go with it.
And you do you want the plywood signs?
No, but that size.
That's.
Size.
The size.
Okay. I didn't know if we were talking about we wanted like plywood with spray paint.
Well, we already agreed as long as it's not rough cut.
Okay.
And the letter painted.
It's going to be five eighths.
It's going to have a nice little material border around it.
Alright, so we got good discussion on this and we're going to do more research and bring this back to our next meeting.
So are we going to talk about the easier table now?
Yeah, apparently we're going to talk about the the shorter, easier one. She's next. Any other questions, comments, concerns, signs?
One more comment. So um Rich mentioned that we would have a document that we're creating for um, you know, kind of samples of this is what we mean by a cafe sign or
Yes.
Sandwich sign. So um Bob actually does have in the building section of the website, his sub menu has um guidelines that people can use, like if you're building a deck, this is how it should be built or, you know, different things like that. We could put it there because it already exists. We can also link to it from other places on the website. So we can figure that out, what's the best place? But Bob did say from his perspective, and since he does actually, he would actually enforce this ultimately, we could put that there.
I think that's awesome.
So we know it could live there when it's done. And so I started working on that, but.
Great, that's great.
Sweet.
Yeah. Because it gives people that that go by to look at, okay, what, you know, what are they looking for? When it's like some people like, yeah, okay, just show me what what's good.
What does that look like? Yeah.
Right.
Right, exactly. So we'll have that available.
We can have a gallery and that that can be one example right right there and yeah, great.
I think that's great. Thank you, Melissa. But a lot of effort into this. Thank you.
We looked at that there.
Uh this right here is actually all Rich's effort.
Well, but.
Well, no.
But to get to this point, you did all that research and put together that PowerPoint, the whole slide deck and that's what's going to be very important when we when we do present this to advisory down the road and town meeting and even at our public hearing.
Yeah, I think it'll be helpful. And I actually I've been updating, just adding in different, you know, it was kind of thrown together at the beginning. So I've just been updating as I've had time to kind of separate it so that we're not at the 11th hour, you know? Advisory meetings tomorrow, need to do it. So I've just been updating it as of that time.
Yeah, and I think we talked about this before, but it might be helpful to have, you know, to have um some small business liaisons kind of help us pitch this to advisory because I I think he, you know, we get to talk about all these weird nuances, but I think just hearing the the, you know, the value driver from the eventual stakeholders is.
Definitely true. So Jen did say um she reached out to me and said, is there anything that when you told her it was on the meeting agenda, when you had reached out and asked her if she wanted to join? Um so I told her, I was like, we're just going to be going through, you know, I'm going to be.
But definitely we we want her at the public hearing.
For sure. And she said she said anything she can do if she needs to come to a public meeting here, she'll be at the town meeting as well because she it's important to her and to the other small business owners. So she did. She's offered that many times. So I think we'll be good there with support.
That's great. Awesome. Love it. Anything else on the signs? Great. So we'll do some more. You'll do some more research on that and then we'll we'll revisit that next month. And obviously, if something comes up in the meantime, we can obviously shoot an email out to to all of us, alright?
Table.
Table of allowed uses.
Allowed uses.
I hear that. Couple of questions first.
Sure.
Did and and if I if you put it in here, I must have missed it, but we talked about removing a couple of districts. Is that that are unused? Is that in here? Where?
It's in uh Article two.
Okay, it's in Article two. So it's a non-substantive change.
Yeah.
Which makes sense because it doesn't really impact anything and it's.
It's page 10 maybe.
Page 10. Oh, deleting the existing, oh, no, that's. You see, you're deleting the headings with the asterisks, but.
And the and the districts too.
But then you're adding the districts back.
Oh, I see. So.
I did a delete.
Right, so you're deleting all the districts and all the asterisks and then you're bringing them all back, but you're bringing, okay, because you're bringing back.
I thought it might read a little bit better that way.
So you got rid of the C two, C three, C five, C two, C three.
Yep. What's that?
Right. Why is C five and C four out of order in the new?
Well, that's why we're doing this.
Perfect. Yes. I would.
I gotta switch.
Okay.
Meeting in place.
I thought we put all these in alphabetical order by topic.
No, we didn't.
No.
There was a version of that that had that.
There might have been.
So you could look down and.
Yeah, what's the best way to read that? I kind of I'm I'm with Eric.
Okay, so that was my first question. So I see where that is. Now, my second kind of overall question was on Article two at the end, so page 19, you have you're just striking out use permitted and regulated, say B one district, blah, 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 blah. And then you're adding back using. Okay, I guess that's fine.
Schools of nursing is on here twice in the in the Article two?
No. Oh, no, yeah, or sorry, Art- Article two.
Schedule of use regulations.
Article two, okay.
Is there a reason why we're banning massage parlors?
You missed that town meeting?
We already have one, don't we? Oh, no, that's a facial place.
They don't do massages there?
I'm not sure. Maybe they do.
So uh Gary, you're talking about, well, let me let's go one at a time.
Yeah, so um.
Sorry, I can bookmark that.
No, I I think I answered my own question. So never mind. I I was wondering why on page 19 and 20, you know, you were striking these out and then adding back with with a little bit different language, which which it talks about Attachment one, schedule of use regulations, but I I think it's fine. I was just wondering if all that should get added to the end of Article one instead of the end of Article two, but I think it's fine in Article two.
You think it, I mean, if you think it rises to a more substantive.
It doesn't. It it doesn't. It it's fine. Yep. But there was one other question. So page, just want to make sure, 13. There's on the table, there's quite a, there's some boxes there that aren't completed in the chart.
Empty boxes.
There's empties. Yeah, they're blank.
Those should be filled. Those were, those are supposed to be no's.
Right.
I think, right, those should all be no's.
And then.
On page thirteen.
Page 13.
Temporary family apartments, renting of rooms, home occupation, use of portion of a dwelling or building.
Three rows. Four rows.
Four.
And then, yeah.
And that's Article two, right?
Article, yeah, Article two. It was page 13 of the PDF or Word doc.
Top half of the page.
Under residential uses.
Oh, so that that's a um. Oh, wait. Let's think of the bottom of the page where that's on. Temporary apartments, that one?
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
So there's just some blanks that needs to be filled in.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
And then if you keep going down on page 17, at the bottom of page 17, you got the dist, you got the, it says districts and it says recreational uses. So let me know when you get there. So the is the district header is wrong because it's got all the asterisks and it's the wrong header.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay. Which one?
Oh, that's page 18.
Page.
Different page.
Oh, I'm sorry. So. I don't know. I printed it out at home.
Oh, here it is.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Page 18?
Well, I guess it's page 18 near the top.
My row above recreational uses.
Yeah, the headings are, the district headings are the old ones.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, yeah. Okay, that's going to be a format.
So also potentially formatting thing, page 11, just brought this up a minute ago, but schools of nursing laboratory technician skills is there twice. I'm not sure if one of those is supposed to be strike through or if it's just a duplicate.
Page 13 is on?
Yeah, uh sorry, page 11.
Duplicate.
Schools of nursing laboratory technician skills physiotherapy.
Article two.
Yep. Article two, page 11, middle of the page. I see that too.
So back to the nature center thing, should that have be, should that be in here?
I guess we won't know until.
For nine days. It's confusing.
So that was.
So confusing.
Let me answer your question. Yeah, that was just duplicate. Yeah.
Cool.
So because that's Article two. So I'll remove that. That was page 11, right?
Yes, yep.
Well, so to answer your question, I would thought we would have had an answer to that tonight.
Which we don't.
Still. I don't know.
So if we don't put it in there, then do we have to go back and amend the bylaws again?
I'm assuming we're going to have to, that's a terrible word. Don't use that, but I should put it in there.
Well, I mean, as part of the the go back to the AG, can't we say like, what are we supposed to do in the interim? Because we do have bylaw changes that we need to make and this is preventing us from doing that because we don't know how to proceed, one with the coding to let the town peop- townspeople know or reference the changes that we're making appropriately.
Yeah.
Yep. And so on and so forth. I mean, they're they're pretty much deadlocking our governmental process with regards to changing the way we operate.
So I would. I mean, for now, I guess I would put nature sign.
I'd I'd put it in there. I I think I still would move forward.
Yeah.
That it's there.
We haven't been.
But I agree with what Chris is saying is they are, they're handcuffed at us and and we're deadlocked because it's tough to make changes without. That's why I was like, I 90 days, I don't I don't accept that request in 90 days. It's not my place to say I accept.
Request denied.
They can't get it done in 30 days?
Well, that's what I was like, that's where I think town council needs to come in and say, how far can we push back? Because can we get 30, 30 day? 90 day doesn't work. We gotta, we gotta get this resolved before our next town meeting, well in advance of our next town meeting.
Yeah.
Because we have to make changes.
We've already pushed this stuff off.
Right. So I, again, that would be, I guess, uh things to discuss with town councils, like, look, we already pushed this off one meeting. We can't do another one. January 10th, 11th, right? 10th. Sorry, I'm a day ahead of myself. Apparently I'm living in the future.
So basically, if I'm right, right? They've already had 270.
I know.
Days to review this.
Right. Well, they just kind of kept putting the ball, petting the ball and now.
Now we're going to just be short of a year.
Right.
I know.
Hope this is not norm. I I don't know. This is, yeah, this is, I will have to, I'll speak to town council, but I will, I'll put nature center in there.
Yeah. Let's put in, we move forward, we we proceed as.
They haven't told us explicitly that it's not approved, so our assumption is that it is.
Right.
Um, my question is that all the line items that are bolded, those are new to this table?
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't have any um anything said to dictate that.
The opening.
It just says to see if the town will vote to adopt the following substantive changes to the zoning bylaws set forth below.
Good call. It should, yeah, it should say something like everything in bold is.
It's just above the top of. It's just above the top of.
Of nothing.
I have nothing.
I don't. So you town vote to amend, nor place zoning bylaws, get away by deleting the following strike through. Add the following new language in bold?
That's maybe in Article 2, it's not in Article 1.
Correct.
Article 1 doesn't just say that.
And Article 2 does say it, yes.
Majority of the text in Article 1 is bold.
Right, there is no strike throughs.
Majority of text is bold.
Not all of it, but yes.
And then you have more blanks and more asterisks.
Yeah, do you, do you really want all these old?
So on, on Article 1, it has to be there, cause.
Right, cause we're not changing.
We're not changing it yet.
But then, um, we do have.
It's creating the table, Article 1 is, we gotta create the table from all the bits and pieces. And then, then we've got some conflicts. And so that's where all this bold comes in.
Yeah, actually, you know what?
You've got more.
Let me double check, I, I don't think there needs to be any, um. Well, so no highlighted in yellow.
Right, on the, on the Google Drive, it's highlighted in yellow.
Yeah, it's highlighted in yellow, and that was for you all to just. See that where they're, the new ones are being added. Well, your point's taken, actually, I gotta remove.
Not necessarily added, they're just being moved.
Correct, moved from the other subjects.
Right, so I think we need to be clear about that as well in our introduction of this, otherwise people are gonna say, well. Now I can't operate my nonprofit general acute care hospital?
So it says, so you town vote to combine Norfolk.
Specific example. For my communication facilities limited to the wireless communications overlay.
It does, maybe it's not clear enough in that clause, so that point, it's in the, in the first sense there about it, but. But yes, no bold in Article 1, I'll remove all the bolds in there. Cause that's just merging them together.
All right, and then, so for that communication facilities limited to wireless, it's, I don't know where it's approved for, because it doesn't show anything, no yeses, no no's.
That's the top of page 3.
Yeah. And then on the bottom of page 3, you're missing a bunch of, I'm assuming no's. And the second to last, third to last, fourth to fifth to last.
So that one on the top of page 3. That's a, that's a, you know, not the greatest.
Because it's specific to the overlay.
No, no, it's tied to the one above it, so that's, that's all.
Oh, I see.
So that's, oh, that's, yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay, that made sense.
I'll need some help to figure it out, but that's why, I, I went back and looked at it, I was like, what?
Yeah, so bottom of page 3 does have some, some missing cells.
Now let me see, bottom of 3.
You can't take these two articles and combine them and just make one article?
The articles we, the articles are this way because of my. Minor was the thing we were talking about with Bob, you're like.
Yes, substantive and, or minor.
Yeah, like Article 1 sets up things and gets a whole bunch of easy.
Yeah.
Right, it just consolidates it, and then Article 2 makes the changes.
Yeah.
And so what is, in, in Article 1, what are all the things that are bold?
Those were uses that were coming from B1, C1.
So we're not changing any of them?
Not yet, not yet, not until we get into section.
So that's why Article, yeah, Article 1, none of it should be bold.
Bold, that's what he said.
Just, right, it's, it's, we're taking all these bits and pieces and creating one use table, one master use table. And that's.
Yeah, I wanna, that feedback is important, cause I wanna revisit that one a little bit, I think.
Yeah, the language that we have at the top, it leads us to believe that these substantive changes mean that, you know, these are changes that we've made within. This document to say, yes, these things are allowed, or no, these things aren't allowed within these districts.
But they're not actually.
But they're not, we're literally consolidating, yeah.
So.
So I think I might do. Is not fill it across, like, you know, put, so for example. The ones that are.
So maybe you shouldn't fill in.
No, it should be exactly as it was represented.
Exactly as it was in the current bylaws, if it was blank, it was blank.
Yeah, it was blank, I'll go back, let me double check all that stuff.
That, I, I agree, and.
That sounds like a fun night.
And do you want, I mean, the question would be is, also, do you call it a substantive change? Or do you say, to adopt the following use table?
Yeah.
To consolidate the use tables.
Adopt a, to, so, to see if the town will vote to adopt a consolidated, I like that word, consolidated table of allowed uses. Maybe you don't even wor, use the word substantive change.
Right. Cause it's not.
It's just taking all these bits and pieces and. Here.
We're gonna need an explainer for this either way, cause it's gonna get confusing real quick, and I think we just have to outline. For the residents that step one is we're. Combining all the tables.
That doesn't, that's not how it reads right now.
Right, exactly, that's why we.
Right.
Fixed that.
I know that's not how it reads right now, but I think that might be a better approach, is to say. Article 1 is to create a consolidated. Table of allowed uses.
Representative of all districts throughout the town.
Right. And then it is exact with blanks as what we have. And then Article 2 is where, all right, now we're making.
Yeah, cause the thing is, the, the first, the way it's written right now, the way I have it, it's, it's pretty wordy. In terms of, you know, cause we have B1, C1s.
No, I, but I think that's still fine.
And then.
It's just the explainer at the top to see if the town will vote, that's the part that you need to adjust.
Right.
Yeah.
The bottom makes sense once, once you explain the top part. I might also, I might be missing something, cause I have a terrible memory, but. And we, we just referenced this, but didn't we go through it, Bob, we split these into two buckets, like minor changes and substantive?
These are two buckets.
But the.
Yes, I know.
That's where the substantive came from, right?
I know, but we're, but.
But we're not actually making any, so I'm, I, and I might just be missing something, cause I'm misremembering it, but. Like, Article 1 is no actual changes, it's just the combination of the. It's just a consolidation, yeah, so that's.
Well, it says Article 1, these are the substantive.
So what, what happened to those two buckets that we went through and?
We flipped them? That's below, they're not, the, the two buckets is, so this is a. Let me clarify with council, this is, I think this is probably a substantive change, cause you're not split hairs, but we might be that.
Okay.
That taking the sub-districts and put it into one.
Is qualifies as a substantive.
Qualifies as a substantive change.
And are we required to say that? Because if I'm getting, you know, if I have the warrant at home and I'm going through the articles. I mean, I know what the word means, but I don't know what that means in the context of, so you've consolidated, you know, can we just be descriptive and kind of plain language?
This is very scary to somebody who doesn't watch these meetings.
All we're doing is consolidating tables, can we say, if we have to use that word, can we also just put in kind of plain terms what we're doing or why we're doing it?
Well, so I might, I'll, I might just use the word consolidate, you know. It's a good word. We can, you know.
And if we have to use the word substantive, then I think we need to qualify it. Like what Melissa's saying is, this classifies as a substantive change because of the creation of the table. But it, it is, in essence, a consolidation of all the tables for all these various articles into one.
Right, there are no changes within these tables in this particular.
We also gotta be careful though, cause that's typically the role that the advisory board plays. As well, so we don't wanna step on their toes, we wanna allow them to take that and kind of present it and the way that they see it as well.
I have notes from the original, and we were gonna alphabetize them all by, by section, and there was a version of this in Excel or PDF that we have, that they were alphabetized. And then we, wherever we made changes, we labeled these all as substantive or non-substantive.
Yeah.
Radical, language change, but this is when it was. 60 different articles.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think it's, yeah, we.
Well, it was 60 different articles, but we went through that exercise to split them into the two groups, which would become the two articles. Maybe that's exactly the way it's played out here, but I don't know.
It's not, it's not, because.
And once you get to Article 2, then you start seeing all the scratch, scratches in the ads.
I can see already it's not, because if you look at. Where, where do I have it?
People are gonna wanna know, why don't we have a post office anymore, why don't we have municipal buildings?
If you look at page 6. Somewhere in the middle, you got SP. ZBA and the ZB, or not ZB, but ZB is bold, where SP is not bold, so we added. The ZB to it.
Well, we didn't necessarily add it, the ZB was already there in the area where it was stated originally.
No, I don't.
No, I think we added that, cause it was all, it was all just special permit before.
Page 6.
Yeah.
And we wanted to say special permit.
Right, but we had a provision for solo, solar, photovoltaic systems that will fall under the zoning board, as opposed to us. And we're just doing the due diligence of putting who the.
Correct. Right, but I'm just saying, if, if Article 1 is truly just bringing it together, that we can't make changes like that.
Right.
Not, yeah, and so we have to make sure for ground mounted solar photovoltaic systems, we don't have that there.
Right, we can't have, we can't have the bold ZB, it just has to stay SP.
Yep, and I can't. It shouldn't be filled out all the way across.
And it shouldn't be filled out all the way across, so if Article 1 is truly bring it together and consolidate, that's it, no changes. And then Article 2 would, then, then we might need three articles.
Yeah, let's say, now we get back to that, do we have the minor versus?
This is kinda like E code, first is set it up and reorder it, right? Then second was. Non-substantive, then the last was substantive changes. This is a substantive change to create the table. Then the second article be, could be. Non-substantive changes, just to get rid of all the things that overlap and, and duplicates, right? And then maybe a third article of, okay, now these are substantive changes, cause we are. Making, cause there were some changes, there was some clarifications on some things. Right?
Yeah, probably not substantive, but I know what you're saying, like, what.
But.
I like the initial version where you can actually read about what happens every line.
I know, but that's, how are you gonna, how are you?
Well, that, that's a different discussion, but we were making changes like these, hey, well, it's planning board, now we changed it to zoning board.
Correct.
You gotta, we gotta explain all those different things. It's a change, no one's gonna catch that in that table unless.
Right.
Make that explicit, that that happened there.
So are you thinking it would be helpful to have more of, almost like when you go through and redline a document and show what it was before? And that's where I was leaning initially, but then I think town council mentioned to you, Rich, that that would be really hard to explain at the town meeting, but maybe as backup? Could we do it that way, like, it's not necessarily.
Like it's a supplement?
We may.
Yeah. Right, so that, when you get this at home.
It's supposed to be not allowed there, now we're making a special permit.
I know.
Now it's buried in.
What are you referring to?
Well, there were, there were some changes.
Corrections in here.
And, and I'm sure they're incorporated in here, but like, what, what everybody's saying is like, there's no.
There's no context to the change in a cell value, right?
Right.
Some of them, it's easy to see, like, you know, convenience or retail stores, we've consolidated those all down into retail sales. Or retail services, or commercial service. And so that, that's an easy one, but just looking at this, it looks like, oh, well, now I can't have a retail store, you know, or establishment offering primarily retail services, I've gotta open up a retail sales store. Which, you know, sounds stupid reading it, but.
So, Rich.
Had it here, we talked about that whole topic, we eliminated these three lines, we combined it to one, and then we filled in. What we thought made sense, but.
I mean, I don't wanna go back to 40 some odd articles either.
Right.
I, I, that just.
Especially when we get to like, we've got a line for lumber and building supplies and a mix of yes and no's, and then the one that we're scratching out has mismatched of yes and no's. Underneath it says lumber and building supply storage and sales yard accessory to building with footprint in excess of 10,000 square feet. So now what happens there, it's, it's allowed to exist in places where it didn't exist before, and now it's also not allowed to exist in places we were allowing it to exist before as well. How, we need to explain those things.
How do we, we index every line of this on, on lines 10, and then we've got a cheat sheet at the back, line 10, this is the.
Yeah, that's what Melissa was just saying, like, something supplemental to help people. Follow along, cause this is.
But it's, it's, but, but it's almost gotta get printed in the warrant, too.
Yeah.
It can't be, it can't be a handout, it's gotta.
When you get there, no, no.
It's gotta be, it's gotta be provided in the warrant.
Can there be supplemental materials in the warrant? I don't think so, right, it's just the lead in and then the.
Can there not be, because it would be, is there a reason aside from cost for printing?
Because it's not part of the consideration. Yeah, I think it's just.
But I feel like you can't really consider it unless you've, so I, when I got the warrant in the mail for the last town meeting, I was like, I don't know how anybody knows what's going on, that doesn't.
With the ballot words?
Just everything, like, it's just, you know, this little tiny booklet, the backups there, like, all the supplemental documents that actually explain what it's talking about are there when you get there, but by then, your people are already voting, you don't have time to consume it, you don't have time to ask questions. You know, it's not that helpful at all, I don't think.
We've done like lead ins, like pre-supplemental stuff. Outside the warrant for like B1 zoning, we put a lot of, like, Rich made a flyer, like an explainer flyer, and, and you know, same thing with the fire station zoning. Issues, right, like, we made supplemental materials, we can get those out ahead of the game, but you, you gotta get them to people and people have to understand them, and. Um, I'm still not sure if it actually solves the problem of coming into a town meeting and looking at something like this and having questions, like, where do you turn and get them answered? Without standing up?
Well, so it does go, you know, this is the, I feel like this is the question all the time around the town, when people are like, oh, we get to the town meeting and we don't know what's going on, we don't know, you know, I feel like that probably. In a way prohibits people from even showing up, because they're like, I know when I get there, all of these things are going to be explained to me, and if you look at some of the town Facebook pages, people will say, well, it's already decided before you get there. And that's not the case, but they don't know that, and the reason they don't know that is because they don't attend the meetings where it's gone through ad nauseam, you know, from, in so many different committees and groups, and. So is there, like, before town meeting, should there be something where kind of townwide, or maybe it's something with, you know, advisory, all the articles, whatever?
So when, so when Jack was here, he used to do a. As a town administrator, he would do a. I guess I call it pre-town meeting? So, um, prior to town meeting, and people were able to come, and, and when I worked in Dedham, similarly, they did a, a pre-town meeting. So it was a head of town meeting, so everybody had the opportunity to come and go through the warrant.
And ask your questions.
Ask your questions before town meeting, and then when you went to town meeting, you know, you had, so there was a chance to review the warrant, go through the items, ask those questions. Before you're actually voting on it.
Can we do that just for the planning board stuff, just do a special meeting?
But is that really helpful? So we, we all, I think all the different boards try to do as much as they can to get out there, you know, and it, but it's all separate. And so I don't think that's very helpful, as much as we all try to be helpful, I don't think it is helpful, because what you really need is everything that's consolidated that you're about to vote on, not individual meetings, cause we have enough of those.
I mean, it was helpful when we did the B1 committee, like, recording, where all the planning board members did, did reads off of.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, if we did similar, like, hey, you know, we're gonna do a pre-read of our articles in the town warrant, and we invite everybody to come in, ask whatever questions, and if you don't have an opportunity to join. You know, please feel free to submit questions ahead of time, here's the document that you can look at, and we'll record it, and we'll post it on the town's website, or whatever avenue we can, and allow them to consume it after the fact as well. And, I mean, we'll have to target a week or two weeks before the town meeting. That's a good MVP, but I still think there, the, and I, I can just do this as a resident, uh, might be worth reaching out to select board and seeing if there's appetite for that pre-town meeting thing, and see if the new town administrator wants to get involved in that.
I think even, I think Jay even, I'm not 100% sure, but I think Jay is the moderator even attended that meeting.
Okay. I mean, we, we can do that as the planning board, or I can do that as Gary Sullivan, I don't care either way, I'll, you know, I'll reach out to them.
No, I can re, yeah, you can, reach out to them individually, you can circle back, I mean, it definitely, you know. It was helpful. For sure, and encourage people to. To, to come ahead of time.
And so depending on what ends up happening there, we. And so depending on what ends up happening there, we need to decide how we're presenting this information regardless. This isn't going to work. This isn't going to fly. This is too complicated. Eric's version is the right thing to do, the one that he brought. Because that can clearly goes through all of the articles. And I think that's the direction that we have to go in unfortunately. Because that communicates.
Or you can talk about this, these, these seventeen, you can group them. These are just the language ones.
Right. So maybe, maybe we present these articles as this, but we review it in our special session like that.
Yeah.
And that's what you were saying, right?
Yeah, because that's why we went through that exercise.
To put them in different buckets.
But I still, I still think we need to, I still think we need three articles. I do. I think you have one article that just creates the table as is knowing that there's conflicts, as you pointed out. But you got to put it all together because you got to have to do that one thing. Put it all together. Boom, you got a master table. Then I think the second article is non substantive. Clean up all the duplicates and make.
So if you pass the, if you pass the first one and not the other, nothing changes. It just looks stupid because it's all, it already exists the way it is. There's already conflicts in there, right?
Right.
So it's step one is consolidate. Just it's very clear.
Right.
You know, what we're trying to do. Step two is the, these are language cleanups.
Right.
Right? Step three is here's the stuff we're actually changing.
And then step three would be the one with the substantive changes, but then that's the one where we're going to have to have a breakout. Like, hey, this is in conflict right here. And this is the change and this is why. And then the next one and the next, I mean.
I think we got to re-watch this meeting. We went through all this because at the end of it, we had a plan.
Yep. Review that.
And we'll need to really understand with council what substantive, substantive versus non substantive is because if just putting no's in place is substantive, then that's going to be problematic. But if just putting the no's isn't, we can boil the no's into our second article. That way.
Right. I would, right. That would be my, my recommendation is take everything as is. That's the first article. Create this master table, knowing there's conflicts.
Yeah.
Then the second is, okay, now let's, let's get rid of the districts.
Right.
Let's add all the no's. Let's, let's, you know, get rid of duplicates of things, all that stuff. And then the third article is like, all right, now, because there was a couple where we're like, oh yeah, that, this was a no, but it really should be a yes.
Right.
Then that, and then we need to explain why.
Yeah.
So you, you liked this, correct?
We went through them line by line and that was the last time we did that. And so we'll say. It's not when we did it.
The line by line discussion, the, the context is very helpful.
Yeah.
Would I want to go through all forty eight of those again? No.
No.
Not, not individually.
No, but that's, but that's where if we had one article that bundled all the chain, all the substantive changes with a brief description and then I, it would be a big article. Don't get me wrong.
Rich, you were going to say something. You said, I will say.
I'm sorry I cut you off.
What do you want to do with this? Like this is, this is what blew this whole project up originally.
I think at the end of that meeting, we had a discussion of what, it was going to go somewhere.
So we, this is what blew it up because it was multiple articles.
But we were also trying to position it during the, the financial town hall as opposed to the, the.
No, no, I'm just saying. So we would potentially be walking it back. And there's a logic to it. I'm just saying, like, no, we're not, we're not going to have forty eight articles, blah, blah, blah. You know what I mean? So, so from that to this, we need to kind of.
I think, aren't we back to where, so I think this is what we're saying now is really what the advisory committee wanted, which is for us to bulk them together.
So we'd have the three articles. What we're saying about that stuff is that's kind of our goalpost for the explainer piece. We don't know what that looks like. We're not sure if that's something supplemental. This is a supplemental document for people to watch.
We're not saying that becomes the article.
It could be Chad on NCTV with, you know, with professor glasses and leather patches on his arm and just kind of going through and saying like, all right, here we go. Article number one, and he's just going to explain it all. I think this is really good.
You really set me up for this, uh, NCTV.
Special, special night with Chad. Because we need a guide, right? Like we need the reasons.
Yeah.
Because, you know, I, I can't remember all the reasons these are changed. We only had this discussion four months ago, so.
Right.
No, no, I, I agree. We're not saying we want forty articles.
Well, I think we all agree. We want this to succeed.
Right.
And we can't, we can't come to town with forty some odd articles. That's.
And then that begs the question, do we just go to the first town meeting with Article One and Article Two to make those changes? And then we come back with Article Three? Or do we have to do this all at once?
I'm optimistic. I, I think we can sell this. We just got to keep doing this due diligence to structure it so it's consumable.
Article one, two were.
Article one is the consolidation. Right. That's why we're talking about it.
And this isn't the public hearing tonight. That's why we're meeting.
So I mean, you know, I think it makes sense. Article one's the consolidation. Article two is the, um, no, Article one is the consolidation of the table. Article two is the de-duplication and the aesthetic cleanup.
Aesthetic cleanup, yeah, de-dups.
And then Article three is the, the grand push.
But then Article three is going to have to have different pockets of explanation.
Right.
But can it?
I think it can.
How much of that do we need?
Because you, you might go through a whole page here and go, yeah, there's no substantive changes on, you know, if we have, say, we have ten pages. Say, say the table is ten pages. And then after the cleanup, it's now eight pages, right? So Article one creates a ten-page table. Article two, now it's cleaned up and it's eight. But then we might find that there's really only two or three pages of substantive changes.
So when are we targeting this for? Spring meeting?
Spring.
When's that? April?
April, Warren opens in February.
It's May, but we have to have it printed in the warrant by when?
Well, the printing of warrant is just a few weeks.
Okay, when do, right, right, right. So it needs to, it needs to go to, we need to have our public hearing in March on this.
So my question is for our February meeting, can we have Articles One and Two done with an idea of what's left for Article Three that has to get explained? Because then at that meeting, we can make our decision clearer.
I think so.
I think that's how we move forward.
Yeah. And I think coupled in there to get a better idea in terms of where we stand for with, with the recodification.
Yeah, correct.
I think if we index every line of this, at the end, you can talk about, these are the changes on line nineteen twenty-five.
Yeah, if.
Sixty-seven.
Don't lose that.
If, if we're really stuck with the, you know, with what we assume the structure of the warrants are like, what can we do for like indexing? Because I've seen, you know, there's been financial warrants that are like eight pages in the book before, right? So the length isn't that concerning to me. It's the readable and then another.
I, I like Eric. Can do with E code or not. I, I think that would make sense. Like, oh, hey, go take a look at the allowable use table.
We can highlight it. There's some.
This wouldn't be E code though, right? This is just, we, we give town administrator the layout of what gets printed in the warrant.
Well, no, I mean, eventually it has to get translated to E code as well. So we have to work within the bounds of that.
Yeah, but if you was.
If, if like hardware stores was line twenty-one, somebody could say, oh, you're looking for the hardware allowable uses? Go to, uh, row twenty-one on the allowable use page or table. And then that's an easy way for them to know where to go. But it also allows us to communicate the changes that we're making.
Right.
But then that also might complicate things because then we have to say, hey, we're removing rows twenty-one through twenty-five and renumbering the following ones to that as well.
But what you're saying does have merit. We, maybe the numbering doesn't ever go into E code for the final product. It's just for.
Yeah.
It's like, it's like footnotes almost. It's like, hey, we numbered all these so that now you can go here and you can see row twenty-two, this is the explanation. Row thirty-five, this is the explanation.
Yeah, we can do that, right? It doesn't, what we present on the warrant doesn't have to exactly be.
It does.
What's going to go in the E code.
It does. It has to be in the supplemental material.
Got you. Yeah, what's in the warrant will go to E code, but.
Yeah.
So. So the indexed rows would be supplemental.
Right.
Right.
Okay. We can make that work.
I'm back to how to communicate this to everyone.
We already came up with the NCTV idea.
Apparently I'm doing a fireside chat or something.
I would watch that. I would watch that.
We need to get one of those little corner fireplaces.
Do we, this, I'm sure.
Between two friends?
I'm sure it's a lot, but do we try to coordinate basically the, basically what you said, Rich, but like just go over what's written in the, in the warrant right now? I don't know if this is live, maybe a Zoom since we can still do that. And anybody from the town can join and where their select board's there, whoever's going to be, or maybe not select board, they don't usually speak, but anybody that's going to be speaking at town meeting and they can just go through, you know, high level, this is what you're going to see at the meeting next week or two weeks, whatever. By then everything's printed and we're good. Like, you know, we can kind of take a breather. But now we have this time before the meeting, whether it's, I don't know if right before the meeting is really the time to do it or if it should be, I feel like maybe a week before and maybe via Zoom and then people can.
And we need to make sure we target the advisory board before that.
Oh, well.
Oh, for sure. For sure.
Well, that's why the hope was to get this all wrapped up, have the public hearing in March. And then a meet, and then, you know, assuming everything goes well at the meet at our public hearing in March, we hand off.
Well, we're starting tonight to have a public hearing in February, but yeah.
I know, but well, yeah, that's probably not going to happen. But I mean.
Start the public hearing and just not close it till.
I don't think we can. I don't think we can. I don't, I think there's.
You can start the public hearing, but what you start has to be what you're going forward with. So you can't be like making changes.
I think we need another meeting. I think we need to spend the next month at least, like you said, get Article One and Two ready and start working on Three.
It doesn't, not to say.
Article One and Two, that's going to be easy. Rich, you could probably have that turned around within two weeks. Email us a copy. We can give it a thumbs up. And then move on from that.
One and two.
And then have Article Three for us by February. And then if we like it there as written, we can have the public, uh, hearing on it then and there and prove it if we like it.
Right.
Well, we won't have enough time to advertise. So it would be March you go for a hearing.
It'd be March.
That's fine. Because we gotta do the fourteen day.
And then we would meet, and then assuming it all goes well at the public hearing and we can close the public hearing, then we would hand, we would hand it off to the select board as, as, hey, this is what we want. And then the select board decides whether they want to pass it on to advisory or not.
Yeah, and advisory, I don't know. I could double check, see, but I mean, they're not, if you had a public hearing, that's a March, at the March meeting or a special March, whatever.
Well, we may do an early special March meeting.
Early March meeting. That still would be quite a bit of advance, I think.
I think, yeah.
Okay. I would think there's, because they ramp up.
But that's the target. I mean, that's the target is to be by our regular March meeting is to have the public hearing at that meeting and close it. Open and close. If we all feel comfortable, I'm not trying to push it, but if, if we can do it, open, close it, be done.
All right.
Hand it off.
Yeah, so I'm going to go.
I think the three articles will work. I, I do. That third article is going to be interesting.
I think you need to take a page from that deck that Eric's got there with regards to how we're communicating. It doesn't have to look like that for the warrant, but we need to have a supplemental that looks like that for review.
Yeah, and that's, then that's what, um, yeah, that's what Bob put together.
Which is, yep. Yeah, I'm sure that's in our, one of our Google Drive somewhere from four or five months ago. Yeah. Okay.
So that can be the.
I like that approach. Okay.
Do you like it?
Do you like it?
I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
I didn't see the finish.
I think it makes sense logically.
Yes. I just want to be conscious of your time as well. Make sure that you have the amount of time you need in order to put this together. It's not a, a small lift.
No, I'll work it through. I think, I just want to go back through because I know that some of the work that Bob had done, he did it based off of what was before E code.
Right.
And E code, E code made changes to the table.
Right. Our unofficial adopted E code, you know.
Our E code made, like they already made some changes to some of the stuff in the twenty-one stuff.
I know.
But I'll, I'll try to highlight those so we can just show them like, because there's some, because he, Bob literally, which is great, took what was in there and just say, hey, it's got an S on it. It's got an S on it. It doesn't have an S on it. So they started in that, that version. They took and tweaked it, but, okay. All right. It's a good plan.
Okay.
It's the right thing to do.
Any other questions, comments? We ran everyone off on Zoom. Sorry.
This is a B.
We might have people's. I mean, we might have some YouTube live streaming, but we ran everyone off on Zoom.
I just got to say though, for a meeting with no public hearings and no events, we did really well. We did.
Well, you know, I, I kind of feel like maybe this was that gift we needed because we really did have time to focus and really think about how we want to move forward with these two articles or with these two items, multiple articles.
We're building the scaffolding for a healthy, productive 2023.
Really, we really are like.
Wow.
Wow. That's, that's amazing.
That's like Kevin Calcutta level speech right there.
I have a meeting tomorrow and I told Kevin I'm going to channel my inner Kevin.
You're in a, you just got to get him to write all your speeches.
All right, any other, before we move on to the next item, anything else on those?
I think we're good. I think we've got the plan.
So next was, um.
Meeting minutes?
Meeting minutes. Eric.
Uh, I got the wrong paper.
Meeting minutes for twelve five?
Uh, make a motion. We approve the meeting minutes for twelve five meeting is printed.
So moved.
Let's see, did you get my?
I did. I need to change it.
I had two minor.
Yep, thank you.
Clerical changes, easy. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
So moved.
Okay. Um, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? It's unanimous. Then is discussion for the master plans during committee. We talked about that.
We already talked about that.
We're good. And then.
Yeah, we went backwards.
Town planner updates are done. Any, anything come up while we were talking here? All right, uh, then our 2023 schedule, uh, so the next meeting is actually on a Monday, not a Tuesday because Valentine's Day is Tuesday, fourteenth. So we're meeting Monday, the thirteenth. And then we get back to our normal Tuesday schedule.
Perfect. Thank you.
We may have to change is the, maybe like the what's in it? That may be, I don't know, if that's town meeting or something, we might have to change that one.
Good, good point. We may, uh, yeah, we may have to look at May and, and we always seem to have some conflicts in August with vacations. So we'll, we'll revisit that. It's.
I do, it's not on the, but I did, I understand it was meeting today that they're working to try to extend the.
Zoom?
Oh, the remote meeting?
Remote, yeah. When's that expire currently? At the end of March.
March.
Didn't we say we were going to try and do a, an amendment, like a bylaw change to allow that for public meetings going forward?
The select board.
That's the select board.
Where we were going to write a motion, ask the select board to support it.
We were hoping the state would do it and we wouldn't have to do it.
Right, but I remember asking to get it on that list of things that Rich is working on. Just in case. That way it was always in a provision for the town, no matter what happens with the state.
Yeah, the only thing, the difference is though, I don't think the public, so is it the old version of it being remote, it's fine for the board members, but it's not. What's the difference? I'm trying to think. I know what you're saying.
I got, I, I know I asked about this before. I'm looking to find the answer in my text. I believe it's something like what you just said. I don't think the select board can approve it across the board to have meetings with. I'll look at my notes, but I, I asked about this last time we talked about it and I'm pretty sure it wasn't, for the way that we run it now, I don't think they can approve it.
Oh, okay.
And I think, so a board member on the old pervert, before COVID, the board member could be remote.
But not the public.
The public couldn't.
Okay.
You know, the, the way it is now, you can do both. So there's that.
Right.
Back and forth interaction. One's highly valuable and it's not the board, it's not the board member being able to zoom in.
What's that?
One, one of those.
One, one of those is highly valuable and it's not the board member being able to zoom in. So hopefully they address that.
Yeah, the, the push was to try to, I don't know. I think it's ambitious. I think they're gonna have to do it. So at the end of March, the new governor to go, I mean, to get something done by the end of March permanently.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
Yeah. That'd be awesome, but.
Can we have an update about the, uh, solar field stuff that we discussed and then it went to conservation and it's still got closed and.
Yeah, so, uh, Lincoln.
A lot of pointing back and forth back at us.
Lincoln and meeting house. So meeting house.
Meeting house is all set.
Is all set. It was, Lincoln was the conditional, right? And then it was.
Conditional plan, concom approval.
On a CLC, they're not gonna issue us a, a complete CLC commission.
Okay.
The commission's entertaining a partial.
Okay.
Cause your boat was, uh, there was no partial versus full, so.
But there's a difference in the, uh, amount to re-seed and re-loan versus what we had given for a bond, two inches or six inches.
No, not necessarily, no. It's just that there, um, there, the area that's concerning with it needs to be re-seeded and so forth is part of your area. So they're gonna sign off on the, where the, the panels are, where that's all grown in. So that's why they're doing it.
And so they're concerned about the side on the other side of the fence?
They're concerned.
The gravel driveway.
And the gravel.
Gravel driveway too, yeah.
But they want six inches of fill brought in and then seed, which is a different value than our two inch bond was.
Cause I think we did a, what, a $25,000 bond, which assumed two inches roughly, but yeah. So, okay.
So they, they're gonna be before the commission on the, well, hopefully February.
And we were conditional based on their approval, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
That sucks.
And, um.
And then.
And the work that we asked to be done, has that been done?
What's that?
The conditional stuff that we asked them to get completed?
Some of it's been done. Not all of it. They haven't, they haven't performed well.
What additional stuff?
So our, our permit, or our.
It puts up, it wasn't, it was put in, but not well. What's that?
What, the, the dirt berms?
The, uh, the check dams.
Remember?
The check dams.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause there's, there's sediment there and then it's making its way around. So.
That's why we asked them to put in multiple, yeah.
Right. But the shape of it's directing it towards.
If it redirects it, it's gonna miss the rest of the check dams.
It's redirecting it towards the other check, you know, so it's going to the east, some of it.
Right. Okay.
So they haven't, they haven't done well and they haven't done the other work that the commission had asked.
So ours was temporary till a certain date or what was ours?
Yours was temporary, yeah.
Temporary till.
Till June 1st.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Yeah. With the bond. Um, so it may be worthwhile to revisit the bond in relation to what they want. So they, they match up a little better potentially. I think they're clo, they're not.
They're not, we're not miles apart.
No, 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 no. Not miles apart, but, but they're only.
They're, they're, we, we, I guess.
We're in conflict a little bit.
We are in co, I guess the town's a little, could be at, at a small risk of coming up short.
In conflict in what sense? What do you mean?
Wouldn't say they're in conflict. They're just, we, the bond probably is not, or, my best guess is not sufficient. So there's a small risk of the town that if they were to default and we had to come in.
Well, you are carrying a bond. They're not, they wouldn't be. So, so if you wanted to be on the same page as we, we should make sure the bond is sufficient to cover them as well.
I mean, to be honest, I mean, we have the, the loam already available to us at no cost.
DPW.
Right.
I mean, yeah, we really.
It's really the grass seed that we'd be more concerned about.
We really don't wanna, uh.
Can't commit them.
Going in there.
Well, it's, yeah, cause it's, yeah.
Cleanup site.
Yeah, cause we, you know, it's, we take on the, the risk.
Right.
A little bit.
Right. Puts us in.
If you recall, we had, we were surgically looking at the words within the report, how to interpret them. That was part of the issue with some of this stuff. So, um, but yeah, they're, they're gonna do their thing. I don't, I don't know. Let me think about it. I'm not sure how much conflict we're in though.
I don't know if we're necessarily in conflict. I think the bond's just a little light.
We also, I'm saying in that conditional approval, we had other things that they were supposed to get completed. You're saying those other complete things aren't completed yet either. We thought some of that was immediate, right? Like you said, that the following day or the following week, something was coming in to be installed.
They did some, no, they did some of that stuff, the check dams and those were out.
Updating the ASB to represent the driveway and all that stuff.
Yeah, they did all that. It's just not.
Inver pipe or something had to be done.
No, the pipe was at meeting house and that was, um, dependent on, um, uh, and the electrical company.
Oh, there was a different one over it.
It was showing the Inver, the pipe.
I thought it was a flare end section.
Flared end.
Oh, install a flare end, right, right. I haven't been out, so I'm not sure.
But I thought they had it like, they still had to source it or something. It was on background. I don't know.
Got it. I forgot about that.
They do need to do that. And there was a couple of things they need to update the ASB plan on.
Was update the ASB, install a flare end.
We haven't got any of that, so it hasn't been done.